And following this, we'll have the pledge. All those wishing to participate, Ms. Dan, please.
Holy Father, we want to begin this meeting by acknowledging you and to give thanks for the privilege of living in Pinal County. And Lord, to the extraordinary resources that you've put here, and even the climate and topography is just like the land of Israel. And Father, just like the land of Israel, there's opportunity here. And Lord, for knowing that you put resources here for the benefit of the people. In fact, you told Moses to tell the people in Deuteronomy eight, to dig copper from the hills to benefit their lives. And Father, we see that that's gone on for years here. So Father, we thank you for the privilege of living in this place. And we recognize that we stand here today because we stand on the shoulders of people for centuries who have enjoyed the benefits of being here. The Native Americans digging the original canals and seeing the prosperity that could be enjoyed because of the richness of the soil. And Father, for generations, people have come here looking for a better life and in some ways, a promised land. I know my wife's grandparents moved to Valley Farms in 1936, looking for a better life here. And Father, most of us live here because we've chosen to. Although we do have a large constituency, who are here not of their own volition, they're behind walls, because, Father, they didn't learn to follow your guideline, to love your neighbor as yourself. But Father, I ask for guidance and wisdom for these, for this body right here, that they would look out for the interests of the people. And that, Father, the churches would turn away from serving self to serving people and teaching people how to love one another and to live in peace. We know that's your objective. We ask you to grant this body extraordinary wisdom and insight in the many decisions they have to make, because none of us know what the future holds. But we're blessed today because wise decisions were made in the past about water and agriculture. And Father, we enjoy that prosperity, so we thank you for that. Grant this body that same kind of wisdom in dealing with the matters at hand today and also with the uncertainty of the future. May you grant them your wisdom. And we'll praise you and thank you for the privilege of living here and being blessed with good leaders. We pray it through Jesus. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Well, thank you, and welcome to the Pinal County Board of Supervisors, July 6, 2022, regular meeting. We are in session. I would say that Supervisor Kavanaugh is attending telephonically. Do we have him online or on the phone?
Yes.
And Supervisor Goodman is also calling in. Do we have him?
Chairman, Supervisor Goodman has not joined us yet. I will announce when he is on the line.
Running fashionably late, is he? All right. So, all right. First, we have call to the public. And I would just say that those wishing to address the Pinal County Board of Supervisors need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. First up is Kim Vandenberg, I believe. Good morning. Please state your name and generally where you live.
My name is Kim Vandenberg. I live in Casa Grande, and I'm from HOHP. And I wanted to come and share good stuff with you guys this morning. This year will be the 10th year for the Pinal County Veterans Stand Down, and we're real excited because we're in great competition with the other rural counties. And our stand down is used as a place for people to go to see best practices for stand down. And what I mean by stand down is it's a day where we bring providers in like a one-day stop shop, where veterans can come in and receive services from the different providers from across the area. Over the last nine years, we've served over 2,500 veterans at the stand down, and we're able to provide Veterans Court. We have CARA there, housing, emergency services, the VA, behavioral health, employment, education. A lot of our homeless veterans come in at that time to receive emergency services. So they have showers, haircut, food, clothing that's provided to them. So this is our 10th year. We're really excited. And I wanted to extend an invitation to you all. At 10:00 AM, we'll be having a flyover to celebrate our 10th year, and we'll be doing a pinning ceremony for all of the veterans that are in attendance, our Vietnam vets, all of the vets that are there. We have several pins. We also have a female women veterans pin that we also present to all of the veterans in attendance. So we're excited with our partners to be able to do this again October the 8th. And we actually start at 7:00, start registration for the veterans that come in, but at 10:00 AM is when we're going to do our special ceremony for all the veterans that are there. And we serve breakfast, we serve lunch, and we didn't falter during COVID. We still had our stand down during COVID, but restricted it to veterans in need of emergency services and only had the providers there that could provide emergency services. And during those two years, we served 125 veterans from Pinal County that needed emergency services. So we're real excited to do that again this year, and we hope to see you all there.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Noel Rec from Casa Grande. Regarding the call to the public, it's not called "call from the public" or "citizens begging to speak." It's called "call to the public from you, an elected body, protected by state statute and the First Amendment's speech and petition provisions." As such, it should be held with proper respect to those who speak and the thoughts that they share. At the last board meeting, Roberto Ravelas eloquently spoke about the call to the public being a forum that could foster trust in and respect for a governmental institution or when improperly instituted, do the exact opposite. He stated that no government employee, particularly one that is armed, should attempt to intimidate or silence the speaker for comments that employee finds objectionable. Finally, he asked for a call to the public policy to be produced almost three months after it was originally called for, and its creation was agreed upon by this board. For my own edification, and if permissible, I would like to ask Mr. Lou, who exactly is producing this policy and is the public involved, and if not, logically, it should be. As for myself, I left the meeting completely disgusted with your reaction to my opportunity to speak. I hope you were suitably embarrassed after being chastised for your rude and unprofessional behavior. I called you out for not responding to my efforts to bridge the gap between the public with an ever-growing dissatisfaction with the selected officials and those officials by presenting the University of Maryland program to you on April 27th, and I stand by those remarks. With all that in mind, I would like to make some additional suggestions for the policy, since it is still being created. Number one, and I can't even believe this needs to be said, when citizens are speaking, supervisors put their phones aside, close their browsers, sit up straight, and truly listen to the speakers, thus giving them the courtesy they deserve. Number two, extend the three-minute time restriction. And number three, if a supervisor responds to being called out by in turn calling out the speaker, allow the speaker to respond in kind. By protocol, I was not allowed to do that at the last meeting. I will do so today. Mr. Miller, you stated you had responded to me citing an email exchange we had in March. That exchange was about a completely different subject and was discontinued by you when I communicated the inflammatory comments expressed by your assistant, Mike Cruz, at a Republican meet and greet. My presentation of the University of Maryland program was given on April 27th and, in fact, received no response from you or the other supervisors. I would like to close on a positive note with the public service announcement. There is an exceptional exhibit at the Chandler Museum that runs through August 28th, a display of contemporary photographs and oral narratives called "En los campos del Norte," in the Fields of the North. That gives viewers insight into the food that they eat and the people who harvest it. It's highly recommended. Thank you, Chandler Museum, for this much-needed, enlightening exhibit. And I see not a lot's changed.
All right. Next up is Barry McCain.
Good morning, Chairman McClure, Board of Supervisors, staff, and friends. My name is Barry McCain from Arizona City. Diversity is the salvation of democracy. So what is diversity? It's state including people with different social, ethnic background, and different genders. So what is democracy? It's a system of government by which the whole population is controlled by the majority of its members. I didn't say Republican, Democrat, or any other of the five political parties. So what is an American? It's relating to the characteristic of the United States or its inhabitants. I didn't say Republican, Democrat, or any other of the five political parties. If we're good enough to die as Americans, then we're good enough to learn to live peaceably together as Americans. When my cousin, U.S. Senator McCain III's body laid in state at the Arizona House of Republics, I was on the ballot. I had, even though I was a delegate for the Pinal County in 2012 Democratic National Convention, I received no help or no money from the Democrats of Pinal County. I was systematically excluded from secret Democratic meetings, secret Democratic websites. My social media was hacked repeatedly, no picture of me as a candidate, not able to speak about my candidacy. If I was able to find out about a meeting that I was put in the back with the visitors, not able to sign in, had to sit down and not be able to participate in anything in that whole meeting of Democrats. Yet I did pull almost 15% with no money and no help from the Democrats. Not long ago, I found out that I was a registered Democrat, but I wasn't with the Pinal County Democratic Office or in the office in Coolidge. The Democratic Party has no vetting process. I only received an apology from the state Democratic Chair Felicia Rotellini. I was told that the state office, that no one knew who was supposed to help me with my campaign. After it was too late, I would found out it was David Coward, who wouldn't let me talk repeatedly, but would let Henry Wade and others like Ralph A. Chu, who cannot speak on issues. The definition of respect is a feeling of deep admiration for someone or something elicited by their abilities. Pinal County leadership went to Vietnam War with Democratic money in Washington, D.C. to see the names of my friends that died there. I apologize to the Pinal County Attorney Kent Volkner, Pinal County Sheriff Mark Lamb, this county of Board of Supervisors, especially Supervisors Mike Goodman and Steve Miller, staff, Pinal County voters for the disrespectful, cowardice, undemocratic, un-American behavior of so-called Pinal County leadership. By their actions, Pinal County leadership does not, so-called leadership, does not care more about, they care more about their greed than disabled veterans like myself. The will of the people or democracy, we must save American voters from traitors of the U.S. Constitution.
All right. Thank you. Next up, I'm sorry, Supervisor Miller, you're called, no comment. Teresa Martinez for the legislative update. I'll allow a little extra time because you're vocal.
Yes, I'm vocal. Well, first of all, good morning. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to give you a legislative update, Chairman McClure and Supervisors. I wanted to pass out, I have some passouts for you. First of all, I wanted to thank you for appointing me to the legislature. I did work very, very hard, and I wanted to discuss my philosophy as I approached this legislative session. I approached this legislative session as a football team, where you were the coach and I was the running back. A partnership where we would work together about what is best for Pinal County. And I think that during the six months of the legislative session, we did very, very well. On a note for Pinal County, I'll do with me first, my personal achievements. As you know, I was on the Natural Resources, Water and Energy Committee, Military Affairs, and Public Safety, as well as government and elections. In total, I got three bills passed through the House, through the Senate, and the governor graciously signed, and two of those bills were unanimous. So just all about policy, not about politics. Now, what do we do for Pinal County? The first is going to be the FYI budget. This is the highlights of everything that we got accomplished in the budget. On the second page, two things that I am particularly proud of is $1 billion for water initiatives, including $334 million in fiscal year 2023, an additional $333 million in each year of fiscal year 2425. We are spending, the state of Arizona, a billion dollars to protect our water, because, as you know, water is a dire, dire, very, very important issue. And here in Pinal County, we go thirsty first if we don't fix it. And I give my commitment that we won't. Further down on page two, we have border security. My favorite is the $53.4 million to county sheriffs to provide a $10,000 retention bonus for current deputies and a $5,000 signing bonus for new deputies. I think it's important that we back law enforcement. Going to the third page, another quick highlight, $24.5 million going on to provide a 15% salary increase for DPS. When you back the blue, you back the blue. End of story. And if anybody has any questions or any comments about that, I do back the blue, verhurtly. Another $116 million ongoing to provide 20% salary increase for correctional officers. We also have $50 million for ongoing additional school safety resource officers, $20 million for expanded school safety programs, and close to, over a billion dollars in K-12 funding. So this is just the highlights. I wanted to give that to you. A little more close to home, our second handout is the actual budget. This actual budget on page six is line item 208. We got $15 million to help provide jobs in Pinal County. This is going to be in form of a grant for water infrastructure, for pipes, for all the irrigation stuff that goes on. And Lucid and Nicola are going to be able to apply for these grants to help expand, to help promote their jobs. On page seven, line item 230, $209 million for DEMA, and that is Border Security Fund, Cochise County New Jail, local law enforcement to reduce trafficking, and the various others. Line eight, 264, we bought $1.9 million to Casa Grande for the K-9 unit. I'm very proud of that. On page 10, this is going to be a little quick, and I'm going to go super quick on this. Line items 321, 322, 326, 328, 329, 333, 334, 345, 352 are all going to go for roads, roads and infrastructure. 347 rigs road overpass, 347 overpass for construction and design. The Chandler to Casa Grande I-10, that right there is something that we desperately needed. Jackrabbit Trail, SR 24, Hunt Highway, Scousen Road in Coolidge, 347 widening, and the A.DOT Tier 2 study. I do have a copy of this, and if you would like a copy of it, please let me know, and I want you to know that you can get that from me so that you can see exactly where this money went to. We talked about a billion dollars for water. This is how the WIFIL Board is going to be structured, and I wanted you guys to have that. I wanted you guys to see that firsthand. And then one last thing, and I'll close because I know I'm short on time, is the tenacity that I bring to the state legislature. When we talk about the I-10, we talk about a football team. It was Senator T.J. Shope's bill that called for $400 million to widen the I-10. A.DOT called me and said, "We know you care about the I-10. We have $300 million from the federal government, and it's stuck. We need somebody to go out there and fish it out of the House so that we can get this bill signed and passed before May 13th, so that we can get those funds." I was happy to play that part. Also, my other job, I fight with agencies. Sometimes I just ask them nicely, sometimes we have to throw down. The agency with A.DOT, you have a letter. This is a letter that I wrote to A.DOT and that A.DOT wrote back to me. And I'm happy to gave A.DOT their props, because while we are going to start the process of the widening for the I-10 very soon, fiscal year 23, if I'm not mistaken, what we're doing in the interim is all the trucks, and I love my truck drivers, I do, but we are going to move them over to the right for the next 22 miles from Casa Grande to Chandler to increase safety as well as protection and efficiency. I do expect DPS to patrol there a little bit more for speeders, but I do think this is going to help. Thank you for appointing me. It has just been my great honor. I look forward to working with you guys as partners, because that's how I see our role, partners with the supervisors, partners with the mayors, partners with the constituents and the county. If anyone needs me, I am going to give out my cell phone number to the public. It is 520-709-2311. I am a texter. If you're going to text me, great, just tell me who it is, because I will have a full-blown conversation and not know who it is. So if you could just text me who it is and what it is you need, we can go ahead and come from there. Open for any questions. See you then.
Any questions from the board?
Just a comment.
Quick comment, go ahead.
Since you're talking about football and free agency, I think that's great that we're doing that retention bonus, because a lot of times, every time in free agencies, they always want to get these new people in, but you got to keep the base that you already have. Since we already have officers out there, let's make sure that we do keep them. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I think that's it. Representative Martinez, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Just as a note, Supervisor Goodman, not only is he fashionably late, but he will not be dialing in today. Okay.
Swamp guy.
Technology issues, I think. All right. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board today? Sorry, go ahead. Oh, sorry, Mr. Ravelas.
My name is Phil Todd, and I live in Gold Canyon. Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me to speak, Supervisors. My father had a lot of discussion with me about two words, two simple words, wants and needs. You've probably heard that from your own father, and you've probably talked about it with your children. Going through one of the topics today, it's item 17, is the truth in, there's three proposed tax increases. Even in this written handout today, there's no explanation of what they're going to use that money for. However, as you go through items A through X whatever on the back, they're very detailed, and we understand what the money is going to be used for. I really hope that we can get a further discussion on item 17, or you postpone the actual voting of that until you truly understand what it's all about and where the money's going, because it's a tax on the people. I want to make a comment on item T. And item T authorizes the county manager to negotiate and execute agreements, and that's with an S, not to exceed $250,000 in order to provide job training. The way that's written, are you going to have many meetings that total 250,000, or are you going to have each agreement going to be $250,000? So what's the limit on the money in that, in that specific topic? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Ravelas, I know you're ready, so please come forward.
Roberto Ravelas, resident of Gold Canyon, someone who really values call to the public. I never thought of collaborating with other members of the public when they come here, but when they mention my name, I'm pleased that my remarks stimulate reaction. Mr. Chairman, today's presentation by the appointed representative for my legislative district would be great if procedurally the board would prepare on the agenda an opportunity for us to hear from our public servants, so that we can have give and take, and so that the rules for call to the public can be applied equally to all of us. You've shown some flexibility. That's, I guess, privilege of an executive officer, a chairman. Mr. Chairman, curiously, today on Agenda Item 19, you're conducting an executive session to ostensibly discuss the sheriff's plans relating to public security or safety in buildings, facilities, operations of government buildings and schools. Is the topic truly related to public security, or is it one more piece of the continuing plot by former president, the former president and his supporters, to, in his words, flood public polling places with trained partisan observers and a show of armed law enforcement during the coming elections? It's interesting that Sheriff Lamb recently joined another big lie group, True the Vote, in launching a project patriotically named Protect America Vote. Is this another intimidation project that Sheriff Lamb suspiciously describes as designed to protect the rights of voters and to bridge a gap between voters and local law enforcement to ensure we have secure elections in this country? We saw what happened January 6th, when a mob of Trump supporters sought to secure election results by attacking Congress to prevent the constitutionally mandated peaceful transfer of presidential power. So what's the sheriff really trying to do at today's executive session? Is it to suppress voting while dressing it up as recently announced campaign to combat election fraud? Regrettably, we and the public are left to wonder about our blissful trust in county government and in our elections. This suspicion is the price we taxpayers are paying for Sheriff Lamb's inexplicable political collaboration with a former president, traitorous actions that are being systematically revealed by Republicans fed up with what they've witnessed relating to January's attempted overthrow of our government. Finally, Mr. Chairman, the nation is witnessing what can, what can hide behind executive privilege. Let's not allow our county to be misled by so-called public safety planning hidden behind executive sessions. Conduct the public's business in open session, Mr. Chairman. Involve the public in public safety matters. Trust the public, not the apologists of insurrectionists. Thank you again for allowing me a few seconds.
You're welcome. All right. Any others that wish to address the board today? Going once, going twice, sold. Okay, thank you. All right. Item number two will be county manager's report. Mr. Lou.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me just first give you a quick update.
Let me just first give you a quick update regarding, we did do a procurement process to hire a local government expert who's also consults with the International City County Managers Association on the rules of the meeting, the governance of the meetings, and local governance. So we do plan to have him help facilitate a work session as we develop that, so that you all can help us develop the right policy and have public input as you please. And then, we'd like to take the opportunity always to recognize the values that the Penal County employees developed together. We acronymed it ACT for Accountability, Commitment, and Teamwork. And then, we also noted that we function with flexibility and innovation. So with the county team coming together to be successful in the redistricting process under a very tight timeline, as you know, it was delayed, we wanted to take the opportunity to recognize the members of that team and the great work that they did. And so, we did produce a video for that, and we'd like to play that.
Redistricting is typically a once-in-a-decade process whereby the county redraws all of its various election lines and boundaries based on the federal government's decennial census data.
You need to reevaluate your political boundaries based on population, voter precinct boundaries, board supervisor boundaries, justice precinct boundaries.
Now, county's growing. Everybody likes it here, and so people are moving here.
Some supervisor districts were completely out of line in their population in terms of they had a lot of growth. For example, District 2 had tremendous amount of population, over 110,000, but District 1 would still be at 60-something now, and so we needed to re-divide the population into five.
Under normal circumstances, redistricting is not simple. It's a process that involves several moving parts, and the redistricting process this past go-around was particularly difficult or challenging because the federal government failed to timely release its 2020 census data.
I don't know if anybody forgot, but we had this pandemic thing happen, and that created havoc for the census.
So we were behind in receiving the data from the census as well as legislative and congressional districts. And those three data sources are the fundamental building blocks for creating the redistricting process, so we couldn't start until we had that data.
Which ultimately resulted in the county having to operate it under a very compressed redistricting timeframe.
So we had literally a month and a half.
2022 is an election year, and to run an election and to do all of the buildup associated with running an election, the county first had to finalize its redistricting.
Candidates can't know how many people that they need to sign a petition if we can't give them those numbers.
We lost a lot of important people. We had leadership changes in our Elections Department. The project manager, Tammy Rial, who started this project, had some health challenges.
She did some really good groundwork presentations to the board and assisted the board in establishing certain redistricting principles and guidelines.
And so now, we're left with figuring out who's the right people on our existing team to make sure that we can continue on in finishing the work.
County management was able to pull together a very impressive, interdepartmental redistricting team.
The internal staff committee was formed with county attorney's office, reporter's office, elections personnel, county management, and obviously, our communication and marketing department. With the help of our IT GIS division.
It's sometimes referred to as geographical information systems or geographical information science.
GIS is just a mapping software that we use for the county, and the benefits are just every layer, political layer, authority, bringing everything in to a map.
It allows us to perform a lot of location analysis and intelligence about those locations. So we can take data from many different sources, and as long as it has a location involved with it, we can then perform analysis on it.
We eliminated some voter precinct and established some new ones where the growth is and account for where future growth is going to be.
We were then able to redraw our Justice of the Peace precincts as well as our supervisor districts and provide many scenarios for the redistricting committee, for the public, and for the elected officials to review.
Our amazing staff at Communication and Marketing put together a robust program to get the message out to the public. We held multiple town halls throughout the county to get public input and allowed input through web portal. It was incredible to see the amount of public input that we were receiving. We were hoping we would get a lot of public input, but the perception may have been that not many people really care about board supervisor's boundaries.
Neat to see how some people really do care about their government within their county, within their cities. Nice having everybody involved.
Through that process, the public input generated third map and a fourth map. And then finally, towards the end of the process, a final map was developed that the board adopted, which established the new board supervisor's district.
We had to then get those jurisdictional boundaries updated in voter registration and elections, so that way they can create the new voter registration cards as well as start to prepare the ballots for the next election.
Arizona Voting Identification Database is a database that voter registration utilizes across our recording office in the county.
Basically, with the help of Monique, rebuilt the system. We had to tear it down, if you will, and build it back up based on the new lines and new districts and updated precincts.
It was just impressive to me to see that the county could pull together all these unique skill sets and bring them to bear on an individual project in such short order.
Ultimately, I think we were a team that stood behind each other. There was constant, constant, constant teamwork at this.
It was such an amazing experience. The information that I can say I gained from that experience, never anything like that I've done before.
It was a huge learning opportunity for me, too, and I'm sure many of that were part of the process. But I think overall, the success was that we were able to do it in the timeline we needed to, and it resulted in a balance of what we were trying to achieve, which was spread out the population, establish the proper new voter precinct boundaries, correct the issues that JP, Justice of the Peace were having, and then ultimately distribute the population and make up of the communities on how board supervisor's district need to
And cut.
So I think we do have some of the team members that were a part of this. Excellent work. Should be here in the audience if they wanted to stand up for a quick round of applause for those that are intenants that worked on this project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There you go. All right. Thank you. And next up is Presentation to Certificates of Service to Employees for 20 and 25 Years. Back to you, Mr. Lou.
Thank you. And to continue on with recognition, we do have a couple of employees who I don't think are present here, so I'd like to announce them first. Captain Darren Rushing is a captain in our detention center. He started 25 years ago as a detention officer, and over those years has promoted all the way to captain today. And Chief Hedrick is here, and Darren is here. Oh, fantastic. I was going to say some good things, but you can instead. Yeah, if you'd like to come up and say a few words. I got the privilege of Chief Hedrick and Darren touring me on the detention center and making sure I didn't stay too long.
Did you say you were staying at the detention center?
Just a tour.
Oh, just a tour.
Just a half-day.
Mr. Lou, Chairman, Darren Rushing represents exactly what this community has sought for, and that's creating legacies in not only our county government, but just the community itself. The Rushing family represents a tremendous legacy in the detention center. All of them have had great careers, and thus far, I believe, I got the best one. And Captain Darren Rushing. His service is so exemplary, starting as a detention officer and becoming a captain. I selected him based on the man that he is. I didn't know that I wasn't really getting the best version of Darren Rushing. The person who gets the best version of Darren Rushing is his daughter. He's a much better father than he will ever be a detention officer, and that's probably the highest compliment anybody can receive, because that is our finest role we will provide to the world, is good fathers. So what we have here is a great detention officer, but truly, the greatest dad. And I thank him for his service. Thank you.
Thank you. Great to see you, Captain Rushing, and glad you're here. I do have one more that I don't know is here or not, but I don't know if Ms. Raquel Garcia is here. Sometimes people decide to show up, and we're happy they do. She's not here because she's currently working at the Justice Court where she is a judicial office supervisor. She started 25 years ago as a secretary and promoted to judicial office supervisor, and I believe she's there working now because her team is short-staffed and they need her. So congratulations to Ms. Garcia, and thank you for your service. And then, we have two employees from Public Works who have both been here 20 years, Oscar Martinez and James Knight. They both started in June of 2002. And today, James Knight has promoted all the way to Assistant Highway Foreman, and Mr. Oscar Martinez has promoted to Highway Foreman. If they'd like to come up and say a few words, or Mr. Smith would like to?
Oh, you're going to have, we're going to have pictures, we're going to have pictures in a while, so you're going to have to come up anyway.
Come on up. I've only been in this position, hi, I'm Andy Smith, Public Works Director. Only been in this position for a little over a year and have had many opportunities to work with both of these gentlemen, and they have been fabulous to work with. They're great assets to our team. And so, we kind of reached out and got some information from some of the staff, the managers that they work for. So first and foremost, I'll start with James, and then I have a little thing I would like to read about Oscar. James has worked with Public Works for 20 years. He's Assistant Foreman since 2018. He's actually a road scholar with our local training assistance program for all the training. So he basically does all of our, a lot of our training and has done in the past a lot of the training for the equipment operators, heavy equipment stuff. And he's got a road scholar one and two certifications. He's a CDL. He has involved with scheduling and organizing community cleanups. He's done, did a lot of work in our monsoon seasons, and so we can really count on him to kind of help facilitate the cleanups as well as getting those roads opened or closed if need be, or when they need to be. As for Oscar, he started, as Leo had said, he works in the Hidden Valley Public Works Foreman. He is also a road scholar with the LTAP community, or with the LTAP program, one and two certifications. He has a coin of excellence for his services that he provided to the, during the Rosa Storm that we had a couple of years ago. And he is a, working on a lot of the same stuff that James does. So just wanted to kind of give him a special shout-out and say thank you both very, very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next, we have Ms. Anu Jane, who works in air quality. She's been here for 20 years. She started out as a air quality permit engineer back in 2002. She's currently our air quality manager. I don't know if Ms. Jane is here. Hi, Anu. And there's our director, Mike Sumblum. Thank you. They work on a lot of complicated stuff on some major projects for us. We always appreciate it.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank Anu for her time here. She started out here 20 years ago, obviously, as a permit engineer and has continued that work over time. A few years ago, we lost our permit manager that'd been here for many years, and Anu stepped up and took that job and has just done a wonderful job with that process. We permit 300-plus sources, and she keeps track of that, all these new projects that come in that are new and something different that we haven't seen before. I always rely on her to look at those and inform me about where to go and how to address those. So I really do appreciate her time here. She's been wonderful, so.
Thank you, Anu. Next, we have two employees from our county attorney's office. First, Barbara Ludwig, who's been here 25 years, hired back as a legal secretary in 1997 and is currently a paralegal. And we have Ms. Julie Westerfield, who was hired 20 years ago, back in June of 2002, and has been a senior paralegal all these years. And I believe we have Mr. David Rodriguez here to make a few comments.
Good morning, Supervisor. Chairman. I'm David Rodriguez, Chief Deputy, County Attorney's Office, and very happy to be here at this moment. We have two wonderful employees that have been with the office for many years. I know much of our emphasis is in recruiting future employees, but it's sure nice to be able to be here and recognize those who have been here quite a while. You know, people who choose public service, I think, are the salt of the earth because they choose many times lower salaries than going out in the private sector, but their output and their ability to work in public service and do good for the citizens and taxpayers of Penal County is a wonderful thing. And so, please join me in thanking these two ladies. One of them is Barb's in our Civil Division, and Julie's in our Criminal Division, and they both do a fantastic job, and we sure appreciate it. Thank you both.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just take one small liberty, because Barbara does work in the Civil Division, and I've been over there and had the privilege of working with Barbara for 10 years now. And just as a point of reference, it was said that Barbara started in 1977. I was a year out of high school then. But it's been great to have Barbara as part of our team. She has pitched in and done a lot of things over the 10 years that I have been here, and so we are lucky to have her.
Very good. Are we taking pictures?
Yep, yep. Mr. Chairman, if the awardees want to come up and take a picture with the board, that'd be great.
Stand up, sit down, come on down. Everybody come back, we'll take pictures in small groups.
Small groups.
Or big groups.
The three, just spread out. Want to sort of?
Spread like three, two?
Yes, I like that, yes. It's very fitting.
Spread out.
Everybody come over just a little bit, so we get them away from the corner. Actually, come forward, forward, like up to here. There you go. Head right here. Come back around a little bit. Come forward, come up to the line, right in there. There you go. There we go. Actually, Miller, come over to, there you go.
Okay.
Give your pre-go. And, okay, everybody looking here, I'm going to take a couple here. And, very happy to be here. Three, two, one. Very nice. Three, two, one. And one more. Three, two, wait for that really good genuine smile. Three, two. There we go. Thank you.
Come on, give genuine smiles.
Look at that. All right, let's see, next up is Item 4, Purchasing Division Report for July 6, 2022, Tiara Peterson. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, and members of the board. I'm Tiara Peterson, Purchasing Manager for Pinell County, and this is your purchasing report for July 6, 2022. First, the board is requested to approve the following contract awards. ROQ 204526 for On-Call Engineering Development Plan Review Services. We recommend contracts be awarded to the following suppliers: La Chao Consulting LLC and Somas. The initial term of the contract will begin on July 6, 2022, to run concurrent with the existing contract, and the contract is used by the Community Development Department. ROQ 226627, Joc for Housing Mechanical HVAC Installation, Repair, Renovation, and Replacement. We recommend a contract be awarded to United Technologies Inc., DBA Unitec. The initial one-year term of the contract begins July 6, 2022, and this contract will be used by the Housing Department. Next, the board is requested to approve the following contract amendments. IFB 180123 for pavement maintenance materials. We recommend approval of Amendment Number 5 with a price increase from vendor pavement restoration and to exercise the optional extension period from July 25, 2022 through July 24, 2023 with the following suppliers: Ergon Asphalt and Emulsions, Pavement Restoration, Via Sun Corporation, Western Emulsions, and Wright Asphalt Products Company. This contract is used by the Public Works Department. RFP 203026 for Public Defense Services Office Attorney Services. We recommend approval of Amendment Number 2 with a scope of work change and to extend the contract effective July 1, 2022 with the following suppliers: Michael J. Bressenhedt P.C. and Jessica Zachary of Zachary Law Group. This contract is used by the Public Defense Services Office. RFP 208025 for onsite tire consignment. This item appears on the report as a correction to an item presented at the June 22, 2022 Board of Supervisors Meeting. We recommend approval of Amendment Number 1 to exercise the optional extension period effective from July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023 with Southern Tire Mart LLC and not Pinell County Community College District as previously presented. The contract is used by the Fleet Services Department. Next, the board is requested to approve the following purchase requests per Pinell County Procurement Code Section PC 1-350 governing competition impracticable purchases over $100,000. REC 164420 in the amount of $190,194.52 with Harris Systems USA for software and maintenance support used by the Assessors Office. And next, the board is hereby notified of the following cooperative purchases made. Requisition 164431 with Kuhl Enterprises LLC, $124,780 for consulting services used by the Finance Grants Department. Requisition 164547 with Synergy Petroleum LLC in the amount of $249,999 for diesel fuel used by the Fleet Services Department. Requisition 164549 with Wax Bank in the amount of $249,999 for fuel used by the Fleet Department. Requisition 164560 with Empire Southwest in the amount of $125,000 for vehicle and equipment parts repair and service, also used by the Fleet Services Department. Requisition 164481 with CRM of America LLC in the amount of $225,000 for waste, tire, recycling, removal, and final disposal used by the Public Works Department. And finally, the board is requested to approve the following cooperative purchase. Requisition 164526 with High Tech Network and Security Solutions in the amount of $276,000 for consulting services used by the IT Department. And that concludes your Purchasing Division Report for July 6, 2022.
All right, thank you, Ms. Peterson. Does anyone on the board have any questions? Supervisor Kavanaugh, you still with us?
Yes, I have no question.
No questions, all right. In that case, may I ask, I'd ask for a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the Purchasing Division Report as presented.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Peterson, you have a good day. All right, Item Number 5, Consent. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by the single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Are there any items that anyone from the board wishes to pull? Supervisor Miller.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the convenience of the call to the public, I think there was a question about Item H, so I'll be, if we can touch base on that.
Any others?
That's the only one I have.
I'm going to pull Item C. Supervisor Surti? Supervisor Kavanaugh?
None.
All right. In that case, I would, is anyone from the public that wishes to pull an item? None, all right. In that case, may I get a motion, please, for?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. You ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
Make a motion. Isn't that an intergovernmental agreement? Is that what the gentleman asked for?
No.
Are you right? That's right, right.
It was T.
Oh, T?
Yeah.
Excuse me.
They're closed, they have a cross member and a vertical thing.
Because that's with Kevin Costello and James Smith?
Yes.
Okay, then let's pull T as well. But I do want to touch base on H.
H and T, okay.
Yeah. So.
All right, so then, did you want to make a motion there?
So, yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda, A through, it was, A.
AK.
HK.
AK, yeah.
AK, AK, minus C, H, and T.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. And we will start with Item H. Supervisor Miller.
So H was a intergovernmental agreement with the town of Queen Creek not to exceed $45,000. This is pretty common practice when we joint venture, in a sense, is a good, maybe a good word to use, with our communities. It's a procedural thing, it's not to exceed. I think the S in that might be in case there is an extension or another modification to the agreement going forward. Mr. Lude, is there anything else you want to add to that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller. Just that there are some times when there's complicated projects that we're involved in with the town that working jointly on public relations and public education is a very effective means and very appropriate, and so that's why we would do this IGA. One example would be the education meeting we held at the Combs Performing Arts Center not too long ago. And we have professionals that they've worked with as well in the past, very successful, good at community education.
Okay. So, is there any other questions? I'll make a motion to accept Item H as presented.
If there's no other questions, I have a motion for Item H. Hearing, hearing no questions, I have a motion, is there a second?
Yes.
You second, okay. I have a motion and a second. In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Supervisor Kavanaugh, okay. Those opposed? Supervisor Kavanaugh, you there? Earth to Kavanaugh, Earth to Kavanaugh, is he there? Okay, I'll wait just a second.
You have a quorum anyway.
I do, but I'm going to give him a chance to vote. Has he gone around the backside of the moon, is that the issue?
Man, I've had trouble all weekend with my calls dropping.
Shall we go ahead? Okay, I have a motion, a second, I have three ayes. And those opposed? Hearing none, Item H passes. Item T, Supervisor Miller.
I'll ask Mr. Smith, James Smith, if you want to explain this one for the purposes of the public, our gentleman from Gold Canyon, to better understand.
Chairman McClure, board, pleased to speak about this item. This really is an item that is trying to provide an economic development tool, but it also helps benefit our residents. So this, this item would allow the county manager to execute agreements with prospective companies coming to Pinell County to provide a reimbursement for the job training that they're providing these employees. So it's really kind of twofold. It's upskilling our residents, but it's also preparing these folks to make high, to be paid high wages in manufacturing industries primarily. So the goal of this is to bring high-impact projects that are investing millions of dollars, creating hundreds of jobs, and it's tied to the ACA's job goals for Pinell County. So the, the goals for job wages are between $46,000 and $55,000. So that represents 125% of our median wage, up to 150% of the county's median wage. So really trying to target those high-wage jobs and to provide what is, is a small incentive to some of these companies that are investing millions of dollars. And you may recall, we entered into an agreement with Solvay about a month ago. They're, they're investing $63 million, creating 30 jobs but at $80,000 a year. So I think that, that met the goals. But this really, this program really kind of brings some consistency, provides some guidelines for the county manager in entering into these agreements, but also provides us some kind of assurance that we can offer this to the companies and know that, that it'll be approved, so.
And just for the record, it's not 100%? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Supervisor Miller.
Well, I was just gonna say, you know, I think it's important with technology moving as fast as it, as it is, to say that I, that we can just bring somebody off the street and they have this training. This gives these companies opportunity to train for more specific needs of that company and, and it just, it just benefits everybody moving forward.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. It's also not 100% of the training, it's a, it's a piece of it.
Right.
Right. In fact, the program.
It's even weighted, is that correct?
Correct. They're, they're supposed to significantly invest more than, than any reimbursement we provide.
And we, we offer them more for Pinell County resident than, say, a Maricopa County resident.
That's true, I forgot about that.
That's correct. Every agreement will be structured such that a Pinell County resident, the company would be entitled to two times as much reimbursement as a, as a non-Pinell County resident.
Mr. Todd, does that answer some of your questions?
Not really. There's no cap on it at all to it, apart from I've seen it written in the way he talked about it. I mean, are we looking at 10 different companies in a year? Where's all that money coming from?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I can answer that.
Please, Mr. Lue.
Yeah, so we didn't put a cap on it because we don't necessarily know how many companies are coming in, in a particular year that would qualify this agreement, but two things would happen. One, e- even if these were executed, they would be brought back to you for approval and ratification, similar to the, what you just saw in the purchasing report, as well as this would be subject to our budget constraints. And if any budget amendment would be needed to accommodate any of these agreements, we'd bring it to you for approval.
Okay, Supervisor Surti.
James, this is common practice in any area in the country that's competitive, is it not?
Yeah, in fact, this is probably kind of a small scale compared to a lot of areas of the country.
We've been behind the curve so far, so we're just now actually catching up.
Yeah, this is a small tool in the toolbox compared to what other states can offer, really.
Sounds like it, okay. Any other comments?
You good? Okay.
Okay, all right, so that's Item T, so may I get a motion for Item T, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve Item T as presented.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Still no Kavanaugh? Okay. Those opposed? Hearing none, Item T passes. Item Number C is the reappointment of Fred Sanchez from Mammoth to the Adjustment and Appeals Board. I believe Mr. Sanchez is sitting right there under the pendulum of the clock. I was just gonna say that he is quite the committed public servant. He is on the Mammoth Fire District Board, he's now on, he's on the Appeals and Adjustment Board, and he's quite committed to his community and to the county. And I want to thank you very much, Mr. Sanchez. We have, we have a, yes, we do, no, I do, yes, I do. Have a certificate for you, you want to come up, we'll take a picture, and then Kevin's around someplace, right? Yep, there he is.
Back there sleeping.
Drinking coffee in the back room.
And, three, two, and one more, three, two, one. Very nice.
Thank you.
All right, so let's see, that would be Item C. So may I get a motion for Item C, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve Item C as presented.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. It's a good thing, I gave you a certificate already. All right, and I'm going to, at this point, let's see, recess the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting to convene into a special district meeting. This will be for the, let's see, this will be for the Flood Control District, Board of Directors. This is, let's see, Mr. Wanamaker, I'm gonna guess. Come on down.
I thought I saw him here.
All items on the, this is a consent, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you really didn't need to come, you can, sorry about that, I wasn't reading ahead, I was just reading the script. Okay, so, so let's see, all items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time the agenda is called, the agenda item is called. Does anyone care to pull an item here, A, B, or C? Anyone from the public wish to call any item? Seeing none, may I, oh, I see a hand. Do you care, which, which item would you care to call?
T.
T, there's only A, B, and C.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, you're, you're reading, you're reading way ahead somewhere. Okay, so, okay, so may I get a motion for? Okay, so, uh, may I get a motion for items A, B, and C, please?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve items A through C on the consent agenda for the Pinal County Flood Control District.
Second.
And I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Uh, item two is a public hearing on, uh, adoption of fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three tax levy for the Pinal County Flood Control District. And presenter is Ms. Woods. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors. Angie Woods, I'm the Director of Office of Budget and Finance for the county. This morning, uh, the item before you is a truth and taxation hearing. Per Arizona revised statute, uh, forty-eight dash two fifty-four, we're required to hold a truth and taxation hearing. In this instance, the proposed tax rate for our flood control district is, sorry, it is point one-six-nine-three for this year, which is not a reduction from previous years.
Okay. And let's see, this is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. Does anyone care to address the board? And seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And I would ask if there are any questions of the board, from the board. Hearing, seeing none, I would ask-
Chairman?
Oh, I, now I'm hearing one.
Not necessarily a question, but, um, the concerns I think I heard during the public comment. The, the itemized expenditures for this, any one of these districts is available online through, through the county, um, I'm sure, website, and they can all be reviewed. We've been shown them in, in the past. So we're not just voting on this today because we have discussed this in, uh, former, uh, in earlier meetings and seen these breakdowns. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that when we're passing these, it's not just today is the first time we've ever heard about it or seen about it. So they've been in earlier discussions with the, with the board, so. I just, I just want to give everybody, you know, an opportunity and they can go look and see where we're spending those dollars. Would you want to add anything to that, Angie?
Chairman, Supervisor Miller, these, um, schedules we adopt with our tentative budget were, um, posted on our website. They're available at all of our county libraries. They were posted the day that we, um, adopted the tentative budget, which I believe was, uh, three weeks ago. There will continue to be available to our constituents via either our website or at our county libraries.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Surti.
But I think any tax increase, most people, most of the citizens see this as, why, why do we have to go up? I mean, we, the county is thriving more than it, than it has been. I mean, you go back years ago, I mean, a lot of communities... I mean, if, if we don't pass this, what, what really happens? How much of a burden is it?
Statute twenty, they can't spend the money then.
There's no way to spend any money.
Any money.
Correct.
And a lot of folks don't understand that. They think that just, we're just raising our taxes.
Correct. We'll, we'll also hold a, a separate hearing in August for the actual adoption of the rate. This is the point in time that our constituents can come forward and voice their opinion.
Okay. So what is the timeline then on the next?
So we have until the third Monday in August to adopt, uh, our rates for, um, each of our districts in the county.
Okay.
Another question.
Certainly. Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And did we raise the rate or did we leave the rate the same?
Uh, the rate is exactly the same and it has, has been.
So it's the same as last year?
Correct.
So we did not raise this rate?
Correct. The, the increase in the levy is due to the increase in the net assessed valuations.
In the net evaluations.
Correct.
So we've kept the rate the same?
Exactly. And the reason that we have this hearing is to notice the public that the levy is increasing. We could have chosen to decrease the rate to the same levy as in previous years. At this point in time, we've left the rate exactly the same.
But the wording in the second paragraph, it raises taxes twice.
Correct.
But we're not raising, even though it says we are.
We're not, we're not raising the rate. The levy is increasing. So we are raising the tax because the net assessed valuation has increased. So you're correct. Our taxpayers will be paying more money because their valuation on their home has increased. We did not reduce the rate down to, uh, the point of our truth and taxation, which would have been, um, point one-six-zero-three instead of point one-six-nine-three.
And how much of a lag time is there? I know with sales tax that comes in, you're actually almost a couple of years behind by the time that money goes to the state and gets back to you. I mean, the, the housing boom is kind of over. I mean, things are, they've topped out and it's going down the other side. So when is, when was this? When did they go up?
That's a great question. Um, I believe, um, our assessor's office does valuations and they're typically about eighteen months in arrears.
So we, this is a year and a half ago?
Yep.
And it's on the recommendation of one elected official?
Um, the assessor's office has the duty to assess, um, each of the, um, properties in any kind of taxing jurisdiction, and so that, that's their, uh, responsibility. They've went out, they've, um, assessed each of those properties and gave that valuation. And so this is based off that valuation and the rate of point one-six-nine-three.
So for discussion purposes, we could slash taxes across the board and the assessor could just say, everybody's house is worth more, and it just goes right back up.
So the, um, also by, uh, statute, we're, as a county, the net assessed valuation for existing properties cannot increase more than five percent. So, um, the net assessed valuation is held to a, a kind of a max at any one given year. New construction, obviously, once they come on to the role, that is the valuation that they are at that particular moment in time. Does that answer your question, Vice Chair?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller.
And, and correct me if, um, you can challenge your evaluation. I mean, you, there is a mechanism that, you know, in other words, you're allowed to appeal your, your evaluation at the assessor's office. There's some formality and there's dates certain that that has to be done by. But there is always an opportunity for a person to challenge the value of their property to the assessor.
That's, that's correct.
One other factor, I want to just, if I read the statute correctly, it's the assessor's responsibility to do twenty-five percent of the properties every year with the idea in four years, they would assess all the properties. How, how you really monitor that would be just very, very difficult. But that's, that's how it was kind of designed in the, in the beginning.
So the assessor's office, like I said, does that, um, valuation calculation. That happened in February. They're required to report that to the state in February. And then you're correct, there is a process in which a, a citizen or taxpayer could go through to, um, amend that net assessed valuation for their property.
Correct. And that's kind of how we base our, our budget. We have to, we have to have that number from them to kind of start the process.
That's correct.
That's why we start the budget process in February. So, anyway.
That's correct.
If I remember right, so.
And just as a quick note, too, it's not the value that you're going to sell your house today or tomorrow. It is the assessment value that all these are raising. So if you're looking at assessed value of a hundred thousand dollars, you're talking a difference here from the TNT number of ninety cents.
Correct.
Yes. And so if your home is valued, assessed at two-hundred thousand, you're talking a dollar eighty.
Correct.
Just, just to be clear.
Correct.
Okay.
This is just for one district. This is, for the flood district.
For the flood district.
And I don't understand, there's, and everybody, everybody's tax bill is almost, I mean, if you live in the same neighborhood, it'd be the same. But there's so many variables for where you live, special districts that may be included in yours area that aren't included in other areas. There's a lot of variables to the whole thing.
That's correct. Um, so depending on where you live, there may be, uh, different combinations of taxing jurisdictions for your particular, um, piece of property. So not any, I mean, I guess maybe neighbors probably share that same tax bill, but somebody maybe across the street or in a different, maybe district would, would be different.
So Chris, Chris Keller, a vote today is, or is there another vote in August? Or is this the final?
This, this is for the hearing. There'll be another vote, as Angie explained, in August that must be held before the third Wednesday in August to set the tax rates. Those are all the other rates that you will receive from the various jurisdictions, school districts and so forth, uh, at that point in time. So this is the hearing process, as Angie explained, so that the public can, you know, voice any concerns that they may have.
This is only for the flood district, though. When, when will we be doing the other?
You, you have another one on your next agenda, on the library district, I believe, also. And then you have one for the Board of Supervisors on, uh, item nine. Yeah. It's also on here, I think it's-
Item number seventeen.
Seventeen. Yep. For, for the whole, uh, board, for the whole county.
And how will, uh, how will folks be able to comment on this?
I'm sorry, turning myself off. At, at the public hearing, any time when you open the public hearing, anybody that has a concern can, can step up and voice those concerns.
It's very difficult for people to get down here at nine-thirty on a weekday. Is there any way that they could do it through the rest of the month?
I'm, I'm sure they can always send those comments into the clerk of the board and if, if the board wishes at the next meeting, uh, if they've received any comments, those can be read into the record also.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And every school district has one of these hearings? Every fire district has one of these hearings?
So any jurisdiction, Chairman Supervisor Miller, any, any taxing jurisdiction has to go through a truth and taxation hearing if they meet the criteria for one.
Right.
Um, and in this instance, we're, we meet the criteria for that particular hearing.
They send us their rate and we put it on the tax bill that comes from our office. But it's the, all these other districts that, that establish their rates that we have no control over.
But that's correct, except for our-
Except for, and these are, these are, these are ones that we do control out of the Board of Supervisors.
Correct. So any other taxing jurisdiction, we're just certifying that they went through the process to, uh, adopt a rate or levy.
The fire district, the junior college district, the elementary school districts.
Absolutely.
All of them.
So they-
And those, those, those hearings are probably taking place about this same time.
Absolutely. Um, and, um, my office receives documentation from those taxing jurisdictions on the process in which they go through.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You bet. Any other questions from the board? Okay. I think we're good. Okay. So, uh, I'd ask for a motion, please, on item two.
Mr. Chairman, did you close the public hearing on this one? I don't recall.
Okay. Well, I couldn't either. That's why I went, I'm sorry. So, okay, so let's just make sure, okay. Mr. Ellinwood.
Uh, John Ellinwood, Chief Deputy Assessor. I just wondered if there was any questions for the assessor's office. It, it seemed that maybe there was some-
Okay, I'm explaining.
Okay.
I thought I did okay on that.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, I just heard some discussion about-
No. Okay. So with that said, are there any other folks from the public that care to address the board in this?
Um, I'm Phil Todd, same as I was this morning.
Thank you for not changing in, what, an hour?
Right. I think, uh, there needs to be some education in the community and that there's a fear in the community. I have a very personal relationship with the assessor. He sends me a letter and tells me that my full cash value of my house has gone up three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars. So I sent him back a letter, you know? And I haven't really gone anyplace other than, uh, previously when I attempted this same thing, uh, we were visited by the, uh, assessor and the person that works there. And this lady happened to go through my house three times during its construction. And she came out and we were very polite, invited her in, showed her everything, showed her what we were claiming, and she agreed with us. And then she says, "When I was here the last time, you didn't have pavers for your driveway." I said, "What, what does that mean?" "Well, pavers are taxable." And there's a different rate for gravel or dirt or asphalt or pavers. "How many square feet do you have?" I said, "Well, I don't really know." "That's all right. I'll go measure it." "Oh, by the way, that fence around your pool wasn't there what, last time I was here." "How many lineal feet do you have?" "Oh, I don't know. I'll go measure it." Out of that whole deal, I saved twenty-six dollars on my taxes. Now we're into this economic situation. This morning, I left Van Horn, Texas, in my motorhome. Diesel was four-ninety-nine a gallon. The highest fuel prices is one mile away from here at five-eighty-seven. Now, and I understand you can raise my taxes five percent a year, but I don't know, you know, in seven years, you're going to be there. I'm on fixed income. There's a lot of people on fixed income. You can't make the county survive on the backs of the retirees. And we keep hearing about all the companies coming and all the houses being built. And how do we, how do we assess how much money you're going to have? I envision the assessor is going to come to you and say, "Oh, boy, we got more money than we know what to do with. It's your job to figure out how to spend it." I hope that doesn't happen that way. And I see my light is up. Anyway, when the economy turns the other way, are we going to get a reduction in our taxes? I don't think so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. Any others from the public that wish to make a comment? Once? Twice? So, okay. I'll close the public hearing and ask the board if they have any other questions. Hearing none. Oh, Supervisor Kavanaugh, you back?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Forgive me, I have a spotty phone signal. I wish to respond to Mr. Todd's comments because he's right. The government never runs out of reasons to spend money. Every, every penny we get, whether it's local taxes or federal grants, we never turn it away. And eventually, we turn to the public and ask them to give a little portion of their money, their house, their freedom, uh, in support of government. So this, this truth and taxation is a little bit complicated and, uh, the way it's worded, as mentioned before, and I may have missed a portion of the conversation. But, um, the, the, not only is, do, do the assessed values go up, but we're, somebody may have mentioned that we're building more buildings. And that increases the tax levy, you know, countywide. So I share Mr. Todd's concerns and we need to do a really good job of getting this information out to the public so they understand what it is we're doing, why, why it is we're doing it, and giving them the opportunity as citizens to object to any increases. Now, we've, this board has lowered, um, the tax rate, you know, for the county, but we don't, we don't control every- board has lowered the tax rate, you know, for the county, but we don't control every aspect of the boards in the various districts. So I think it's important that we understand Mr. Todd's concerns and work hard to stop spending taxpayers' money for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Kavanaugh. Any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, then I would ask for a motion, please, for item two.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item two as presented.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Roll call vote.
I'm sorry. Roll call vote. All right, go ahead.
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Supervisor Miller?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Sertie?
Nay.
Chairman McClure?
Aye.
That motion passes. Three to one.
All right, thank you. And at this point, I will adjourn the Flood Control District Board of Directors meeting, and I will go to the Library District Board of Directors' agenda. Let's see, all items, there's consent. A whole, one consent item. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Would anyone care to pull item A? Seeing none, then I would ask for a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item A on the consent agenda of the Pinal County Library District Board of Directors meeting.
All right, I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Item A passes. Thank you very much. Item two, public hearing, discussion on adoption of the fiscal year 2022, 2023 tax levy for Pinal County Library District. And Ms. Woods, you're back.
I am back. Thank you, Chair. This item is worded exactly the same as our Flood Control District item, same statute. The difference here is that it's for our library district. The rate that we're asking for this point in time is .0965. The truth in taxation rate would been .0916.
Okay. All right. Nothing else. Okay, so at this point, I would open a public hearing. And is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak to this item? Seeing none, hearing none, I will close the public hearing, and I would ask the board if they have any questions.
I would like to ask Ms. Woods, two of us come from city government, and we have city libraries. What happens to, what is the percentage, how do those city libraries function without this county money? They seem to function on their own.
The libraries are tied to the county.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the city libraries, the...
But I thought they were tied somehow where some county money goes to help the communities, or is there only just county library?
Mr. Chairman, yes, we do centrally serve the municipal libraries as well through the cataloging. So we all have a central catalog that we keep, as well as the circulation. So we do assist with material supply circulation, and we do all the cataloging for all the libraries in the county, both unincorporated and municipal.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board? Hearing none, then I would ask for motion on item two.
Did you close the public hearing?
I did. This time I did. I closed, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve item number two of the Pinal County Library District Board of Directors meeting.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. I have a motion and a second, and this item requires a roll call vote. This time I saw that. Just checking.
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Supervisor Miller?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Sertie?
Nay.
Chairman McClure?
Aye.
That motion passes. Three to one.
All right, at this time, I will adjourn the Library District Board of Directors meeting and go back to item eight, which is a public hearing on fiscal year H O M E Investment Partnership, American Rescue Plan, Home ARP. Ms. Patel, it's a lot of acronyms and a lot of words, so I'll let you explain.
Thank you, Chairman. Supervisor Heather Patel, Grants Administrator for the Office of Budget and Finance. Today's presentation is in regards to our U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Home American Rescue Plan Act funding. This funding is a direct award from HUD through the American Rescue Plan Act. They had allocated funding to HUD to specifically address certain qualifying populations, and they placed the funding within the home program. Because we are already an existing recipient of the home funding, they granted us these funds. So we are required to create an allocation plan and identify what the projects we would be doing within this program. Back in October, we did bring a funding agreement before you to essentially notify you that we have been awarded and are recipients of these funds. We did go through an extensive process to identify potential projects. We held a public meeting, which was a hybrid in-person and virtual back in January, and then we put out what we called a letter of interest. So organizations could submit a letter of interest to us by March indicating projects that would be eligible under the program. From that, we reviewed each application and identified what, within those proposals, would or would not be eligible, held meetings with each of the applicants, and came up with more concise project descriptions. And then in April, we issued sort of a conditional award letter, and that is conditional upon the board's approval of our allocation plan and subsequently HUD's approval of our allocation plan. The Home ARP program is specific to provide services to people who are experiencing homelessness and provide supportive services to that same population, and they call it a qualifying population. And there's really four of those, four different types of populations within that, and I'll get to that in a minute. The six items up here are all of the different qualifying or eligible activities that we could undergo within this program. The qualifying populations are someone who is currently homeless, someone who is at risk of homelessness, someone who is within the domestic violence or sexual assault, that population who are receiving the services. And then there's a catch-all that's sort of an other population for people who, is to prevent them from becoming homeless. What we are to receive from HUD is a total of $2.221,167, of which we have a set aside for some administrative costs. And then the amount of funds that we have for our projects is a little over $1.8 million. Again, after reviewing the letters of interest, we came up with the project scopes, and we looked at the agency's capacity to undergo each of these projects. And we did want to make sure that we tried to distribute the funds throughout the county while addressing a variety of those six eligible activities. What we came up with is that we would like to develop affordable supportive housing, permanent supportive housing, sorry, in, for about $125,000. We also wanted to provide some tenant-based rental assistance, which essentially is paying people's rent. They choose the location where they are going to rent, and that money or voucher will go with them, and that is for a little over $300,000. We also wanted to provide some supportive services. So what that means is either it's helping to pay staff for some of our organizations, our partner nonprofits, or paying other things like utility assistance and different services that will support them from becoming homeless. And then there was also some operating expenses or, and capacity building expenses for our local nonprofit partners to help them spend the funding, to help them get the appropriate training in order to provide the services and to make sure that they are in compliance with the programs. Specifically, this is a breakdown of our projects. I'm sorry, this looks a lot smaller here than I thought. We have the list of the projects here, the organization name, what of the six items that they would be doing, and their qualifying populations, how much money we're proposing, and then the district in which they are in. So the first project is HOHP, and this is to provide some supportive services, operating and capacity building, specifically out at their transitional center. And then we have Against Abuse, and this would serve the population, of course, that are domestic violence survivors or fleeing from domestic violence. And that would be to hire a rapid rehousing case manager and provide some operating assistance. Rapid rehousing case manager is to help people find and obtain housing, and they are receiving funding in another location for the actual housing. This is just to support that program. Then we have a new leaf, and that is to do the tenant-based rental assistance and case manager and supportive services to support that tenant-based rental assistance program. There are three lines here specific to higher heights human services, and I do want to point out that there has been a minor change. So we would propose supportive and operating services, also the construction of permanent supportive housing, rental and rental units. The third item here, rehabilitation of a shared rental housing. Unfortunately, that project, we had to cancel. They needed to get their unit in operation sooner because they had some people that they had to house imminently, so we had to cancel that project because they couldn't wait for our funding. So we're going to move those funds over into the construction of the rental units, and that's going to increase from eight to nine and a half, 10 units. And then finally, Horizon Health and Wellness, they have two buildings that comprise of eight rental units that are going to be rehabilitated, and that will be for people who meet the qualifying populations as well. And that's how we are proposing to make up our $1.8 million. And as you can see, we did stretch it throughout the county in the areas of greatest need, which is up in the Apache Junction area, and then over in the Costa Grande, Eloy area. We are required to have a public hearing, but I'd like to answer any of your questions if you have them.
Are there any questions from the board for Ms. Patel?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't have the benefit of carefully reviewing the breakdown between administrative costs and actual building of structures. Is there a total that breaks that out?
Yes, thank you, Chairman and Supervisor Kavanaugh. The actual administrative portion is, I'm going to add this really quick, about 630 of the 1.8. So that's 40%? I'm not a math whiz, but it's definitely less than 50%.
About 33%.
Okay, 33%, thank you. And then the new units, that's 925 for new units, and then the rental assistance, which is existing units, is 333,000.
Does that answer your question? Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That does answer my question.
All right. Are there any other questions for Ms. Patel from the board?
And these funds are from, this is left over from the ARP, which is, can you explain?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Vice Chairman Sertie. The American Rescue Plan Act, within the act as a whole, it identified a need to support persons who are experiencing homelessness. And so then the higher-ups in the government decided that those funds would be given to HUD to distribute to their existing organizations or local governments that have entitlement programs with them. And so that's how we got the money.
So these are all funds that we have already paid. This is from our own tax money, and if we don't spend it here at home, then it could go somewhere else, so...
Absolutely. This was not something we applied for. This is something that they said, "You currently receive home funds here. We're going to give you $2.2 million." And so, yes, we could opt not to do any of this and then turn the funds back to them, or we could support these programs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Anyone from the public care to speak to the board or speak, say anything? Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing. And if there are no other questions from the board, I'd ask for a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item eight as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for item A. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Supervisor Kavanaugh, you still there?
Yes.
Do you, are you aye or nay?
Aye, not come through.
No, you didn't hear anything. Aye, okay. That would be four ayes. Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patel. And at this point, we're going to take a five-minute, or five-minute recess or so, it's not in here. We'll recess for five minutes. All right. Supervisor Kavanaugh still there? All right, at this point, we will reconvene the regular meeting, and we will start right up with item number nine, and that's a public hearing on resolution
Thank you, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Board Members. This is, sorry?
Go ahead.
Sangita Deuker presenting this case, Amarillo Creek Pad Amendment. There are three cases within this larger development. It is the, I'm sorry, is...
Can I, I'm sorry, we're making contact. I'm supposed to say that this will be, items nine, 10, and 11 will be discussed together.
Okay. Okay, so there are three cases, basically a non-major comprehensive plan amendment, a rezone, and a pad overlay. The minor comprehensive plan amendment is requesting a land use change from moderate low-density residential, one to 3.5 dwelling units per acre to medium-density residential, 3.5 to eight dwelling units per acre for 635.49 acres. And the next two cases, the first one is a rezone requesting approval of rezoning for the same acreage from CR3 pad, CB2 pad, to R7 and C3 pad. So, and the last case is the pad overlay for the same area, 635.49 acres. Just to give you a perspective of the rezone portion, R7 pad is for 476.25 acres is for the new additional R7. However, the 159.24 acres to R7 pad is already platted under the tentative plat S-033.03. However, the 159.24 acres to R7 pad is already platted under the tentative plat S-033.03. This is already approved, platted. It's just going to change the zoning from CR3 to R7 with the same development standards. Therefore, it is shown as grayed out, but it's just changing the zoning. The C3 pad is 14.88 acres from CB2 to C3 pad. So this proposal of three cases, as I mentioned, is the size for 635.49 acres. The location is along northwest intersection of Papago Road and Green Road in Maricopa area. There are multiple owners, FP5 LLC Entitlements, LLC Meridian, AD LLC Trespoint, Seth Keeler, West Holdings is the agent for them, agent for this whole case, Jordan Rose Law Group. The county map showing the location of this pad amendment. One can see that it's in the central west portion of the county, just south of the town of Maricopa. The area map showing the location of this with the red patch. The northern portion is the reservation for Akchen Indian Community, and one can see that from the south. And the west portion is residential area, CR2, private lands to the south against CR3 and 2 zoning. On the eastern portion is the state land. The comprehensive plan showing the area that is requested for the land use designation change, and also showing the portion to the south, which is already platted. You can see that portion being platted. This is a comprehensive plan requesting change from 1.3.5 dwelling units per acre to 3.5 to eight dwelling units per acre, which is the medium-density residential. Oops. I'm sorry for that. Existing zoning is CR3 pad and CB2 pad. One can see that the area that is requested for rezoning is hatched in blue, and the southern portion is already developed. It is the portion that was Trisana last year. This went forward with the rezoning. East portion showing the state land. Western is again a CR5 and residential development. North side showing the Akchen community. The aerial map showing development, which is, you know, coming up, and the yellow portion showing largely undeveloped area, and, you know, showing the agricultural lands to the south and east portion. This is just showing you a portion that was already approved last year and aerial. This was a part of the Amarillo Creek, which was separated and already approved as last year's case, as PZPD 00120. The reason why I'm showing you is that when we go forward in the site plan, it shows how the connectivity has been still maintained through the roadways and the pedestrian networks. The original pad was PZPD 01603. This was approved in 2003, and it was overall density that was approved was for 3.5 dwelling units per acre. The current proposal is requesting for 3.75 dwelling units per acre. So there's a marginal increase in density that has been requested. The amendment area is for a total of 2,284 dwelling units. Now, this includes the approved plant for the S-033.03, so 600 units of this 2,284 are already approved. So there is going to be additional 1,684 units, which are the new ones, which we are requesting. This map shows the existing and the proposed zoning, the large area of CR3, which is seen in the red dotted line between that, and the CB2 at the southeast corner. The requested zoning is R7 pad with a C3 zoning. This shows the site plan for the amendment area. One can see that the red dotted line is showing the phasing of this with the major collectors. There are entry points along the Green Road, Papago Road to the south, and the Amarillo Creek Road to the west of this development, shown by the red dots. One can see that there are two sites that are shown in green, blue, light green areas. Those are for the schools. The central portion is around 8.5, around nine acres, is a central community park, very well-connected from all of these new development and the phasing that is being shown in parts. The northern eastern portion is already a treatment plan, which is not part of this facility or this amendment area. It's just that it is going to be the way it has been planned. There's no change in that. The southern portion shows the commercial lot that is going to be developed later, is a different owner, and that is going to be an independent approval at a later phase. This map shows the way the green areas, the amenities, are kind of interspersed between each of those phases with pedestrian networks and major collectors and the minor collectors within the whole development plan. This is the south of that, which was approved in 2021, just to give you a perspective. This is the intersection improvements, project site being shown in dotted on the top side of the portion. The intersections, phases two to four, that are showing improvements for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight locations, recommended improvements along those points. More details, if you would want. Chris would share some highlights if needed.
Just to be clear, the little crows flying in the circles, that means four-way stop, right? Just for our clarification here.
Just a moment.
In, say, item number four, five, or six, there's, is that four-way stop? There's two little stop signs, but it looks like four-way stop. Hoping so.
Yes, Chairman. So actually, a couple of these intersections, I can't read the numbers, will be signalized, and some will be all-way stops, and we can get you more detail.
I mean, I think you answered my question. I'm just making sure that that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, you can see in there in the figure. Apologies for the figure. This is what was in their traffic report, but you can see the red little stop sign there indicating the traffic control.
Okay. What are the A through F?
So A through F is their actual access points into the site.
Okay, they're just not marked on the map here.
So there's a green label there, access.
Oh, they are. Okay, never mind. I see them. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. This map shows the open space and recreation plan for Amarillo Creek. One can see now pretty clearly because it's the gray and the green, the way the neighborhood park is connected with different pocket parks and the trail connections that kind of would be accessed by residents within that. And there is a north, on the north portion, along the Peters and Knoll Road, a 30-feet regional trail corridor that would be developed by the developer and dedicated to the county. All of those, I would say, open spaces are connected through pedestrian networks and then connected to the northern portion to the regional trail. This goes, shows a better circulation trails and connectivity plan. We can see that five-feet sidewalks, eight-feet concrete trails, six-feet sidewalks, and on the northern portion, the 30-feet regional trail corridor that I was talking about. One can also see that the dotted line, which is an gas easement along those, would be also a connection of a trail corridor which connects this development to southern portion of Trisana, and that is what I was wanting. It kind of continues downwards. The blue ones are showing the larger five-feet sidewalks, again, the dotted lines to the north, showing connections of these, you know, the open spaces, the trails to the regional This is the land data density, showing existing land use and zoning and proposed land use and zoning. The zoning is CR3 and CB2 pad, and it is requesting for R7 and C3 pad. Residential dwelling units is 2,284 units, which is giving, you know, density of 3.7 dwelling units per acre. This shows the phasing plan, the phase one, which is already moved forward into plating and final plats. The second, third, and fourth phase is what this would be showing in terms of the projected timeframes. The last portion is the commercial portion, which would be phase five of this development. Each of this phase shows a breakdown of number of units. That is going to be the phase one, which is already approved, 600 units, 617 for phase two, 611 for phase three, and 456 for the phase four. Some pictures taken north into the property, south, east, and west. Pictures of postings on the site. Some items for board's consideration. The Amarillo Creek Pad Amendment is for 635.49 acres. Land use change is from medium-low-density residential to, sorry, moderate-low-density residential to medium-density residential. It changes from 1.3.5 dwelling units per acre to 3.5 to eight dwelling units per acre. However, the overall density that is requested is 3.75 dwelling units per acre, of which the 600 units are already approved. Access points along Green Road, two along Papago Road, and one along the Amarillo Valley Road. Housing alternatives, there's a six-lot mix that has been proposed based on the current market demand. The drainage channel along the west of the development cuts diagonally across development northeast to ensure stormwater management with strategic locations of retention basins within the development provided. Traffic circulation within the master plan community is designed to be able to handle traffic generated with major and minor collectors for traffic movement and dispersal. All road improvements with associated developments would be conducted phase-wise as shared in the TIA. There's a regional trail corridor around the Peters and Knoll Road connected with pedestrian trails coming down from residential development by concrete trails. Open spaces, 18%, which comes to, which amounts to 111.94 acres. Designed and planned with parks, amenities, trail systems that connect open spaces, which are well-laid out, pedestrian network systems continued through into the Trisana down PNZ recommended approval with the first non-major complex amendment with no stipulations. There were two stipulations for the rezon, and 20 stipulations that were added for the pad overlay. There was an additional stipulation, number 20, which read as, which was amended, is 30-feet regional trail corridor around Peters and Knoll Road alignment will be developed by the applicant in accordance with the Pinellas County Open Space and Recreation Design Guidelines Manual, and after construction, the trail would be dedicated to the county in a form acceptable by the community development director with an easement provided to allow for HOA maintenance of the trail if needed. I'm open for any questions at this point in time.
Supervisor Miller, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First question, I want to back up just a little bit. Those two sites that are future wastewater facilities, they're not for this project?
No, this.
One is there. One is, and one is future, or?
No, that portion is not a part of this amendment area. It's already developed. It's under, by Global Water. So it's already an existing facility.
You're just indicating that it's not part of this?
No, it's not part of the project.
It's already been zoned.
It's already been.
And it is a facility that is active?
Yes.
Okay.
It's been there since 2007, more or less.
Oh, really? Okay, okay. Just not familiar with the area. I just want a clarification on that.
I can show you this one. So that right northeast portion is not part of this amendment process. It's already being zoned and working.
Well, but it's under some type of, yeah, okay, just so I kind of understand that. The second thing is, though, and you brought it up there at the end, is the developer will develop the trail, and then at some point, it's an easement, and then the county will pick up the maintenance of it. That's something we'll have to budget going forward because it'll be a line item in the open space and trails department at some point. Do we have, I assume that we, we're the ones that are really kind of designing this because I want low maintenance, if any maintenance, because that can get pretty expensive if we all of a sudden have miles and miles and miles of trails. So I just want to be cautious about what we're taking on as, you know, as our responsibility. And what is the trigger that hands it from the homeowners association to the county? When and where does that take place, and how does it take place?
May I add one other thing to? Peters and Knoll is not a through road. It's dirt right now, is it not?
Yes.
Yeah, it's not a paved road. So at some point, that trail could turn into a road.
So basically, this portion of the regional trail corridor, there is a road right-of-way that is going to be abandoned, and there are two, there are two parts to this. There's a right-of-way abandonment and the dedication of the easement of the 30-feet trail corridor. And the details of this is based off of our design manual, open space and trails design manual, and we have been working closely with Kent regarding this, what should be the design of this. And the developer has been working with the open space and trails director to ensure that they would follow the guidelines that have been laid out. And yes, as far as maintenance by the county, I'm assuming Kent is already aware of that and is part of the budget for.
We can only hope, right? But again, then what triggers it? What day do we, all of a sudden, somebody calls us up and says, hey, you got a trail over here. Don't forget to start maintaining it.
Go to the stipulation, please.
Is that in the stipulations?
Yes, sir. Thankfully, we've thought about your questions, reaching this point with the developer. So we'll be working at the future stage, keep in mind, we're zoning now.
Right.
But as we move forward into design, we'll be working with the developer themselves to design the trail per Kent's guidelines, county's guidelines with respect to that. And similar to when we accept a road, that will be improved. It'll go through an inspection process, punch list, acceptance. We will take that easement. And the beautiful thing about this particular stipulation, and we've worked with the representatives that are here today, is that the intent is for us to maintain it, but there could be a period of time there where we don't have budget to maintain it or have the ability to maintain it to the level that the developer would like. So we included in the stipulation that there's the ability to have the developer provide, and HOA to provide maintenance to the trail if we end up in that position. and HOA to provide maintenance to the trail if we end up in that position. Does that make sense?
Somewhat.
Okay.
That ought to be fun negotiating.
Yeah.
But my, I guess, so we're going to have a water meter in our name at some point because we'll have to water whatever vegetation we do put out there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, anyway, the devil's in the details.
Devil's in the details, we're just not to that point yet.
I have not read the guidelines on the, the manual guidelines yet, so maybe I'll have to find that thing and look at it and see what that says, but-
Where does this trail go besides that one mile stretch?
From what I understand, it's part of the regional trails plan, and it goes east and west.
Just Peters and Noll, follows Peters and Noll, runs across-
There's some undulation, I think.
Okay.
Undulation.
Up and down, got it. Okay. North and south?
Side to side.
Okay, yeah, well, depending on which way you're walking.
Okay.
Okay, so, all right, is that the end of your presentation, Mr.?
That's correct.
Okay, and the applicant is here, representatives, and Ms. Hall, would you care to, oh, well, you don't look like Ms. Hall, but, you know, whatever, would you like to speak?
Chairman Supervisors, Cameron Carter with the Rose Law Group here. My law partner, Jordan Rose, could not be here today. So I apologize, I don't look like her or Ms. Hall, they're both better looking than me. I do have a presentation, I'll go through that briefly, and just to clarify a few points, our clients for this project are Amarillo and Papago Investments LLP, JHC Amarillo Three LLP, and Amarillo Marketplace LLC. The driver behind the minor changes, let's see if I can advance this, if I'm learned here, there it is. The driver behind this, this PAD was, was originally approved almost 20 years ago. And so as, you know, markets change and housing markets change and consumers, retail people that want to live in houses, their needs change, there is a need to change up the planning here and to allow for a mix of lot sizes within the community that will allow a variety of different housing products within the same community. And so that's what's driving this. One clarification to Sengita's presentation, and we appreciate all of her help and the detailed presentation she gave. In terms of the number of units that we're talking about here, the result of this change is, is only a net increase of 135 total units. I think there was a transposition in the numbers in her presentation, so we're not talking about adding a lot of units here, but 135 that will result from this variety, excuse me, variety of lot sizes that will result here. Just to advance this, let's see, I've got to click hard, where am I pointing? The site, Chairman Supervisor Miller, that you asked about, that site, there are existing wastewater facilities there, Global operates that, there's also an ED3 substation on that site. Both of those serve the property. And in this case, all of the utilities are already located here adjacent to the property. This is considered as phase one is, is platted and under development today. The future phases will go quickly to development as well. As discussed-
Thank you.
We did talk about the 30-foot regional trail, that's a new requirement of stipulation here as this property is being brought up to the new PAD standards with this rezoning and PAD overlay. We do have two school sites, so, you know, with the adjustment on lot sizing and the reconfiguration, we're maintaining two school sites within the property. We do have support, Unified School District, for this. And then Sengita talked in detail about the open space and the parks, we think this is a, it's going to be a well-planned community and a place that people will enjoy living. I mentioned utilities before, this property does have a certificate of assured water supply, and we view this as, as ready to develop. And so with that, we're talking about minor changes to the existing zoning and PAD overlay, the comprehensive plan, and we appreciate your consideration if you're inclined to approve this today. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions from the board? Supervisor Kavanaugh, are you still there? I don't hear him. All right, hearing no questions from the board, I would open a collective public hearing for agenda items nine, 10, 11 as a group. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak? Items nine, 10, or 11? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I will ask the board again if you have any questions. No? All right, then we'll move forward here. Can I get a motion for item number nine?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item nine is presented with no-
Excuse me, Chairman, we need some clarifications on the stipulations.
Oh, sorry.
This one's-
Mr. Quest.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for item number 11, just to clarify, PNZ approved 19 stipulations. There was discussion of a 20th stipulation to be added later, and that is what staff presented to you and read into the record. So for that motion, if it's the will of the board to approve it, it would be to approve with the 19 plus the additional 20 stipulation as read into the record.
19 plus one?
19 plus the 20th one.
Plus the 20th, okay.
I think that was his word. There we go, okay.
Sasha, he's looking at it.
Yes, just for further clarification, if we can say the 19 stipulations from the Planning and Zoning Committee? Because the additional stipulation-
Was, were fully approved by the Planning and-
It was approved by, okay.
The wording was not, I mean, it was not drafted.
Okay, okay, we're fine then. So all 20 of those stipulations were indeed approved by the Planning and Zoning Committee?
19 plus an additional one.
You want 19 plus one? Because I got 20 written down here.
So jumping back two steps, back to number nine, you're on 11.
Right, Chairman, we're ahead of the game here.
If you stand, if you stand there for just a couple of minutes, we'll get there.
Don't go anywhere, all right.
Okay, so don't go anywhere. All right, so meanwhile, back at the ranch, I have a motion for item number nine, is there a second?
With, with no stipulations.
I got that one.
Okay.
Is there, is there a second? Is there a second for item number nine?
Second.
There we go, motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, item number 10. This has already gone through the public hearing, so may I get a motion for item 10, please?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve item number 10 is presented with two stipulations.
That's two. All right, so I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. And here's the tricky one, item 11. May I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number 11 with 19 stipulations plus one added here, or how do you want, how do you want to phrase that?
As read into the record.
As read into the record.
That makes everybody happy. We have, we have a motion, is there a second?
I are second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Stoker, appreciate it. And we are now to, we are at item 12. This is a public hearing and discussion on ordinance number 2022-PC-001-22. Items 12 and 13 will be discussed together, and we have Mr. Evangelopoulos. You are up, sir.
Good morning, still?
Barely.
Okay.
Actually, no, not, it's afternoon.
It's afternoon. But Board of Supervisors, Mr. Chairman, good afternoon. My name is Evan Evangelopoulos, I'm a planner here with Penal County. And today I will be presenting to you a case in the Santan area. It's in the, close to the Bella Vista Road, and its cases, PZ00122 and PGPD00122, a rezoning and an amendment to a PAD. The first one is requesting approval of a rezoning from the current CR3 to MD to allow for a single-family attached residential development. The second one is an amendment to the Bella Vista Farms Plant Area Development Plan to modify the PAD on 35 acres from CR3 pad to MD pad, and thus allow a single-family attached residential development. It's located, the project in Santan Valley, about 3.3 miles east of West Hunt Highway, one mile north of Bella Vista Road in Penal County. The applicant is planning about 200 lots, land owner is Eldorado Bella Vista LLC, agent representative is Greg Davis, and I Plan Consulting. This is the approximate location of the project within Penal County. This is the project, what you see here is the train tracks, and this is the full Bella Vista development approved back in 2011, and this is the little modification we are doing That's the notification boundary map, and currently is mostly cultivated fields, although it is changing rapidly. Another aerial of the project. Close up, the current zoning again is CR3 pad that was zoned back in 2011, and the proposed zoning is mixed dwelling zoning district MD pad. The Santan Valley Special Area Plans, suburban neighborhood, currently residential development density, it's, it allows both a single-family and a single-family attached, and this development is proposing single-family attached. This is the proposed plan, these are parcels INJ of the Bella Vista development, and this is the parcel, the subject parcel, that's being rezoned and proposed for attached family, single-family. That's a close-up. Some of the development standards, I'm not going to go over them, if you have any questions, please let me know. And this is the traffic impact analysis, the proposed intersections. Just looking for a traffic engineer, just in case you have questions.
Just, just as a question on the legend there, it says proposed 2023, proposed 2025, and you have green and orange, but I don't see any green and orange on the map, are they just like for fun, or?
That part of the legend referred to the previous slide.
Okay, just checking.
Okay, yeah, I zoomed up, I zoomed in and created a different slide-
Okay.
-just to make it more readable. Okay?
Okay.
Thanks. And this is, along with this rezoning and PAD, the applicant is also proposing a minor PAD amendment, and that's administrative. But the good thing is that currently there are three parks proposed in Bella Vista, and those will be, the number will be modified, five parks. One of them, the current park within the J parcel will be private for parcels INJ only as gated communities. So the applicant is proposing two additional parks, four and three. So that's a, must be a great improvement for the whole development. This is just a layout of the community park proposed in parcel J north of the development. And this is the current condition of the site, you can see the Superstition Mountains and AJ, it's all alfalfa fields. This is a project, development is going on currently, it's just south of the site. Looking east, looking west, and items for board consideration. It's an approval, is for an approval of rezoning and a PAD amendment. If the applications are approved, the subject property will be rezoned from CR3 pad to MD pad and allow a single-family attached residence development on 35 acres of land. To date, no letters in opposition have been received, the property does have legal access, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with a 7 to 0 vote. And the proposal is approval of the rezoning with the one stipulation, and approval of the PAD amendment with seven stipulations.
All right, thank you, sir. Is the, was the representative here? You are, all right, please come forward.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my name is Greg Davis with I Plan Consulting, and I'm here on behalf of Lenar Homes, as well as Eldorado Holdings, who's the master developer for the community. And I do have a presentation, I'd like to just touch on a few slides. First of all, Lenar is excited about this project, this is an active adult community, so that's the reason that we're here today proposing approximately 739 units overall. The existing Bella Vista Farms community was approved multiple times, last time in 2012, it's about 2,000 acres in all, and it's approved for 7,500 units, so it's a massive master plan community. The parcel in question, this is, here's a map of the overall community, you can see the various phases within the project. The parcel in question is right there, parcels INJ. So right now, those are currently planned for traditional single-family homes. Lenar is purchasing both those parcels and is building the entire project as a active adult community. However, they want to bring in a new product type that isn't currently allowed on those parcels for the 35 acres, and that's really what we're proposing as part of the PAD amendment. So 35, 36 acres of the project is proposed to be rezoned from CR3 to MD, which is the mix or multiple dwelling unit which allows the attached product. The attached product is already permitted in the comprehensive plan, but the zoning doesn't allow for it, so that's the purpose of what we're doing here. And this is some photographs of the product that they're intending to build. So again, it is age-restricted, but by providing attached homes, you're providing an additional attainable price point, you're providing a little more density in area which allows us to actually add more open space to the project, which is one of the main benefits of this, which I'll, I'll talk on in just a minute here. And this is the overall layout for it, so this whole area will be gated, this whole area will be the active adult, there'll be two product types, there'll be a traditional single-family detached, as well as this attached product in the southeast quarter. But it's 205 acres, you can see the standard lots, these are the detached age-restricted homes, there's 539 of those, actually, instead of six, and then there's 200 proposed of the attached product, that's the subject of the rezoning here today, for a total of 200, or I'm sorry, 739 units instead of 736. So because this is an existing PAD, one of the things we have to look at is the original approval. And if we focus in on planning areas INJ, and this is the land use table from 2012- And if we focus in on planning areas INJ, and this is the land use table from 2012, you can see that the target dwelling units, which is the second to last column there on the right, was approved for 746 units. We're coming in at 739 units. So we're actually seven units less than what it's approved for today. The reason we show that is that even though we are asking for an attached product, which is typically more dense, we're not asking for more density. Overall, there's actually less units than it's approved for today. And the reason for that is because we have increased open space. So I'll get to it in the next slide. Okay. So the open space for the project was approved at 21%. The county code is 18%. And we're proposing a total of 27.3%. So we have exceedingly amount of open space beyond not only what's required by the county, but also what's approved for, for this parcel. And the vast majority of it is for the primary amenity area, which is shown on the larger star there. We do have a secondary park, which is being designed now. But the larger park is the one that has all the amenities. It's a approximately 15,000 square foot clubhouse, has its own parking lot, swimming pool that has both lap, swimming, play pool. It has a lot of grass, open space areas. And as you can see there, the sports amenity de jour is pickleball courts. So there's a total of 19 pickleball courts, including a center court there, which you could see is numbered 22. It actually has some stadium seating around it. It has a metal barn-like structure over it, so it can also be used for other events, et cetera. So it's a, it's a large facility, very high-quality, active adult community that Lennar is proposing here. And this is based on a project they already have called Asante, which allowed us to have some pictures to give you a little bit of the character of the project. This is a swimming pool out there, high-quality materials, architecture, other sports besides pickleball, you have bocce ball, you have shuffleboard, some of the more traditional sports, includes a fitness center, and then just a lot of outdoor seating for concerts, et cetera. So very high-quality project, something they're very proud to be bringing to the county. And we hope you agree that it makes sense in this case to support that PAD amendment for that reason. And then, as Evan mentioned, the other part of this request is that because this park, which is in parcel J, is going to be private for the active adult community only, Eldorado went ahead and revised their plan so that they are making another community park, which is going to be located in parcel O. So they didn't want to have the community lose park space because this project was coming in. So there's actually considerably more open space as part of this amendment than originally planned for. So we think it's a win-win for the community, and we're, we're proud to present it to you for your approval today. So with any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions from the board? Super, you're good?
I'm good.
Okay, hearing none. I assume Supervisor Kavanaugh still there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just checking. All right, so let's see, this is a public hearing, and so we will open, open a public hearing for items 12 and 13 as a group. Is there anyone that wishes to address the board in the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we will move on with a motion. Ask for a motion for item number 12, please. This is with one stipulation, just to make sure here.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number 12 as presented with one stipulation.
There we go. I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Four ayes. Those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, thank you. Item, item 13, I would ask for a motion on item 13, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number 13 as it's presented with seven stipulations.
Plus any, just, good. So I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, thank you. Moving along to, let's see, item 14 is a public hearing and discussion on resolution number 2022-IUP-001-22. And this is presenter Ryan Green. Good morning, or good afternoon, sir. Your mic isn't on.
Is it on?
There we go.
There we go. Apologize for that. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board. My name is Ryan Green. I'm the planner for Pinal County, and I'll be presenting case IUP-001-22. The applicant is seeking an industrial use permit to recycle concrete from demolished developments into new usable aggregate material to be used in local developments. The location is north of West, West Baseline Avenue and east of South Meridian Drive and Apache, in the Apache Junction area. The applicant is Johnson, Johnson Stewart Company, the landowner. Zach Schus has been appointed the agent, and he has appointed Jessica Sarkisian as his agent. As you can see, brought by the county map, the subject area is in the northern part of the county, directly adjacent to Apache Junction and Maricopa County. And this is the comprehensive plan. The tan area is very low resident, very low-density residential. The purple is employment, orange is medium-density, green is conservation, brown is high-density residential, red is general commercial, and yellow is moderate-low density. As you see about the vicinity map, it's directly adjacent to Maricopa County. The brown area is Apache Junction. The two pink areas are the industrial areas within unincorporated Pinal County, and that blue area is Mobile Home Park. As you see with the zoning, the pink area is again CI2. The subject area is highlighted in blue. The white part to the west is Maricopa County, and the part to the south is orange, that's Apache Junction, and that's also vacant state land. All right, by the aerial map, you can see the closest residence is approximately 1,200 feet to the west and to the northeast. And again, the pink area is Apache Junction. North, we're looking onto the site. You can see they've stockpiled some concrete in anticipation of this IUP's approval. Looking south onto the vacant state land. Now we're looking east on baseline and west on baseline. Here's the most recent broadcast sign. Okay, this parcel was created by MOD-21-0024 in 2021. The area was zoned CI2 in 1996 under PZ477-76. And the county has no records of buildings being placed on this parcel. The existing area, the proposed use is allowed in the CI2 zoning district and is regulated with an industrial use permit. The site is currently vacant, and it's in the industrial park area, and it neighbors a salvage yard, a drilling company, a stone yard, and a landscape company. Again, the closest residence is 1,200 feet. The operation, the site will have a concrete crusher in the center of the property. Dump trucks will enter the facility, drop off old concrete, then rotate counterclockwise to leave the facility. Old concrete will be, will then be processed, weighed, and sold to customers.
Do we get smart trucks with that, or just the dumb trucks?
Say again?
Do we get smart trucks or dumb trucks?
Probably dumb.
Dumb, I said.
So here's the preliminary site plan. They're going to enter on the northwestern part of the property, going to go down a little bit south to drop it off, then rotate counterclockwise around the office, the parking, and the bathrooms. Now here's the crusher they're proposed to be using. It's the Kleeman Mobi Cat MC1100Z. Actually saw a video of it, it's pretty cool to watch in action, so, yeah.
It's, it's a smart thing, right?
Yeah, that was smart, yes, that was smart. It's approximately 12 feet tall and 50 feet wide. The impact, the site will increase the amount of dump trucks involved in the industrial park. Crushing concrete will emit a moderate to high amount of dust, and the noise produced will be approximately 86 decibels, equivalent to street traffic. He has in mitigation strategies. Once a dump truck has dropped old concrete, it will then exit. Dump trucks that come to pick up material will enter and immediately go to the scale and exit once the purchase has been made. A water truck will be placed on site and will be used as needed. Also, spray bars will be attached to the concrete crusher to spray directly into the concrete crushing, like, facility of it, and be used as needed. And 86 decibels is equivalent to street traffic, and is acceptable within an industrial park. The commission recommends a favorable, recommends approval with a six-to-one vote with eight stipulations, and staff has an additional stipulation that will now be read into the Stipulation nine reads, "The applicant shall provide the county with an ambient noise study from the site prior to construction and post-construction. Plant operations shall not exceed 65 decibels as measured from a residentially zoned property line. For purposes of the stipulation, ambient noise means all-encompassing noise associated with a given environment, being usually a composite of sounds from many sources near and far. Ambient noise level is the level obtained when the noise level is averaged over a period of 15 minutes without inclusion of noise from isolated identifiable sources at the location and time of day near that a, which a comparison is made."
All right.
Questions, comments, concerns?
Any questions from the board?
The, the water that will be added, how will that, will that be on water trucks? How will they add water to it?
From what I understand, the applicant has told me water will be supplied from the city of Apache Junction.
But how, how is it applied, those sprayers, water truck?
Oh, what's a water truck, it's going to be onsite, and the spray bars will be onto the crusher.
So that's on to the, to the grounds, but then there'll also be water sprayed into the crusher to keep the dust down?
Yes.
Okay, so this is going to be a public hearing, will the public be able to speak? Because there is one person here that is very concerned. This is a very necessary function that they serve. For instance, when I come, I come across the big bridge over on the Hila, what's going to happen to an old bridge? I mean, you can't just put it in a dumpster. So it's, it's good to be able to recycle something like that, and that's what this company will do. So I look forward to hearing the residents' concerns. So that's it for now.
Okay, Supervisor Miller.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I agree with the, the recycling of this is really important. It does, it actually helps us kind of get ahead of our material situation out there in the construction. But to the dust, I, I'm sure that we've had to issue or we will issue an operations dust permit from the county at, at some level for this project.
Yes, sir.
Can anybody verify that for me?
Yeah, a dust permit will be required, and every year they have to submit a port per the Pinal County air quality standards, anyway. And we're asking that it be 1,200 feet is the measurement of it.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure that, because I just knew they'd have to have an annual permit that would be reviewed by our department, our dust people, to ensure that we meet all the standards.
Of course.
And, okay, I just want to validate that.
Okay, are there any other questions for Mr. Green? And, okay, is the applicant here, Jessica Sarkisian? I thought you looked familiar.
Good midday. Thank you. My name is Jessica Sarkisian with Upfront Planning, representing the applicant here. So this is, as he mentioned, at the corner of Meridian and Baseline. It is in an industrial zone property currently, and across from some state trust land on both sides in the park. Currently, as you can see, there's several scrap metal operations. I believe there's a Pioneer Rock over there. It's an industrial area. This site is currently vacant. You can see the state trust land, the state trust land, and you can see the canal, and then the neighboring residential in Apache Junction and in the city of Mesa. There we go. The site is 5.43 acres. They will be accessing off of Meridian Road and not Baseline. Meridian Road on the north, adjacent to the existing scrap metal facility to the north. Existing zone again is CI2. You can see the zoning in Maricopa County and Apache Junction and CI2, as he said before. This is the street view, as he already, Ryan already showed. Again, the proposal, as some of the questions were about the traffic, so the scale will only be utilized as people are purchasing, because this is a recycling facility. So as, if there's people who wanting to purchase aggregate, different types of aggregate, the crusher does have the ability to decom, I don't know, not decompose it, but crush at different levels of size, similar to rocks, depending on what they're being used for. And so it has that, and then as well as the crusher, there are spray bars as this rock is going into the crusher, as well as coming out. There's also going to be trucks, here, let me show you. So there's going to be water truck daily. There's also going to be a water tank onsite as needed. And then there's loaders to move this, within the facility, how they need. And they will also have a water truck spraying in those areas as the, as the loaders are moving things around. Currently, the crusher is, they have it existing onsite. That crusher does have a state permit for air quality, and so that will be converted to this site, as well as with, we will be submitting our annual reports that we do for the state to you guys per the stipulation. Water is going to be supplied by Apache Junction Water at the standpipe on Baseline Road, which as you can see is just to the east on, with a red circle. That is where the standpipe is located. So as the water tank gets depleted, or if they feel like they need more water in the tank or on the trucks, they'll just go straight over there. They already have an existing contract with the water, Apache Junction Water. And with that, we agree to the decibel condition for we are going to get the sound study done to make sure it does not increase above 65 decibels. At the property lines, we don't feel this, they feel this is in line with this correct area, and it serves, as you mentioned, the need. I know a lot of, I'm actually in the Mesa area, and I know a lot of the aggregate facilities along the 202 there are being removed for residential. So it's very important to have recycled in these aggregate facilities available. They are able to handle stuff with rebar in it, and it simply gets pulled out and recycled as well. So that's all taken and pulled offsite as it gets pulled up. So are there any questions at this time?
Any questions from Mr. Sarkisian?
When is the start time, when the noise might start?
So per the stipulation, we do have restricted hours. Can't remember. It's not, can you pull up the other for the Ryans? Oh, thank you. So concrete crushing may occur between the hours of 7:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m., Monday through Saturday. And then during May through September, because of the heat, it is some, from 6 a.m. to 4:30 Monday through Saturday. So there's no operation on Sunday, and they close up by 4:30. So it's, for the industrial uses, it's kind of pretty standard operation hours, so.
Are there any other questions? All right, hearing none, then this is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing. And are there members from the, and, let's see, are there anxious, eager members from the public wishing to speak?
I'm Lenore Conklin, and I first apologize because I'm not a public speaker, and I deal with anxiety, so I'm a mess. On that picture that you had up there, my house is right behind it. It's, you call this the industrial area, and that there are, the one that had questions, yes. Okay, so do you see the canal? And then where the street comes straight down and curves? I'm right there, that's my house. I've had that house for 12 years. My, my concern, okay, give me a second here. First of all, I just found out about this on July 3rd. Never got anything in the mail. I talked to my neighbors on the 4th of July, and they, none of them knew anything about it on that whole street. As the crow flies, there is nothing between us. We bought that property because where it was located. That there wasn't going to be any building going on. Yes, that is industrial over here, but it is relatively quiet, industrial. When you look at that triangle and you say, this is industrial land, but everything around it is not. Why you would put that there, I don't know. Arizona has a lot of land, and yes, I do agree that it's an important Arizona has a lot of land, and yes, I do agree that it's an important thing is to recycle. I recycle. Um, my grandkids just down Meridian, just on the other side of sixty, they go to, um, Brinton Elementary School. Um, the, my concern is that the air quality, not just air quality, I wake up sometimes three and four in the morning to a vibration, heavy, heavy vibration. I don't know when they started or if they have started that, um, pulverizing, because that's what it is, is pulverizing, but it's more than just air quality, it is your sleep, your well-being. Um, my backyard is my haven, and, um, the people in the mobile home park, has anybody told them about it? If I didn't find out about it on that site, I don't know what your measurements, you know, six hundred, it says in here, um, everybody was alerted within six hundred feet. Well, air quality isn't just six hundred feet, and, um, and also, I don't know if there's any kind of a study for the impact of the pulverizing on the ground, the vibration, but I am truly concerned about it, and the value of my home going down and everybody else's. Any questions? Yes, no? Go sit down.
Are there questions from you, Supervisor Miller?
Just, just for clarity.
Yes.
So your house is east of this location, on the east side of the canal?
Yes, and it's along the back of the canal, it's, um, Warner Drive, um, thirty-four-fourteen.
And it looks like there's one single residence that's kind of hanging out there, but then there's, it looks like a subdivision?
That whole, that's whole triangular subdivision, that's where I live, Ironwood Estates One. And I'm right there on where the two roads kind of curve.
Where the curve, okay.
No, go, go, go up, 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 yep. You're not that tall, right there.
She's right there.
There I am, that's my house.
Oh, right there.
Yeah, and so, um, it's, it's a concern for me. Thank you.
Are there any other questions, or any other, any other folks who care to speak to the board? Okay, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. And, um, this board have any other questions?
Just comments, I, uh, I'm for this project, but I do have concerns, and we need to hold their accountable that if the dust gets out of hand or the noise, then we can come back and revisit this and clamp down on it. But if it goes according to plan, then there should be minimal dust and minimal noise. So I think we just need to give reassurances that we will, and perhaps the residents can be one of the monitors, too. And, uh, I know we have PM, PM-ten type, uh, devices that are all over the coun, all over the county. Maybe we put, maybe somebody from our environmental quality can put one over there and see if dust is settling in that area.
Do you have, okay, any comments about vibration or anything?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Miller?
Just real quick, are they, are, are they crushing anything at this point in time?
There's nothing there.
There's nothing there, so the vibration that you're feeling is not from this facility?
That's probably from the freeway trucks going by.
It could be, yeah, I mean, I don't know where the vibrations are, because it's, there's no activity as of right now, but they don't have permission to operate, so, um, and I, and I'm, the thing about this, the decimals, I mean, when you test, you gotta make sure everybody else isn't doing anything. In other words, you don't want added sound from another industry that's operating at the same time when you're trying to test your facility. You, you can run into some issues that way as well, so, um, but I think that our staff and our ordinances have put in enough, um, checks and balances, and we certainly will monitor it, and, I mean, no reason why we wouldn't, moving forward, and, um, and see where it goes. I mean, it's, um, what's the word I'm looking for here? It's just, uh, you know, it's, it's an IUP, in other words, in a, you know, an industrial use permit, and if it doesn't meet the, the criteria that we've set forth, then we will have to, uh, contact the, uh, facility and, uh, address the issues.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, then I'd ask for a motion, please, on item, on item fourteen.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item fourteen as presented with, um, eight stipulations plus one that has been read into the record this, uh, today. Is that right?
For this one, we have to state that Planning and Zoning Commission.
And the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Approved as presented with the eight stipulations recommended by Planning and Zoning Commission, plus an additional ninth stipulation as read into the record by county staff today.
Supervisor Miller, your voice changed, but I did get the motion.
That's fantastic.
Okay, so that's the, what, what she said in that, okay, so we have a motion. There's a second, uh, so those in favor?
Aye.
Supervisor Kavanaugh, you still there? I guess not, okay, so, uh, we have aye, by the way, so three ayes. Those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, all right, moving on. Item fifteen. Uh, let's see here, uh, item fifteen, we do not have a, we're, we're not, not all five of us are here, so we can't actually do, we can't vote on this, but you can certainly present on this, Mr. Petty, need an electrical easement of Trico Electric Cooperative through the airport, or with an, I suppose.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the board. Um, the, this item number fifteen is to, to create and convey a public utility easement to Trico Electric, so they can provide electrical service to, uh, some of the new projects we'll be doing at the airport towards the end of this year. It creates easement along about one thousand feet of, uh, existing roadway in the airport. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Are there any questions from the board? All right, and as again, this requires unanimous consent of the board, and we're down one, so we'll have to, uh, continue this to August third. Is there a motion to continue this to August third, twenty-twenty-two?
I'll move to continue this to August third, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Are you back? Hearing none, uh, motion is moved to August third, or action, the thing, the item, sorry about that. Uh, okay, item sixteen, discussion approval disapproval to increase District One's fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget capacity to eighteen, by eighteen thousand, eighty-two dollars, for total budget of three-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, four-twenty-two. Supervisor Kavanaugh, you there?
Technology's killing us.
It's a great technology day. Ms. Woods, did you want to talk about this? Supervisor Kavanaugh has gone around the moon again.
So Chairman, members of the board, my office received a request to increase, uh, budget capacity for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three by Supervisor Kavanaugh's staff.
By eighteen thousand.
Correct.
Is, is it an increase, or, I mean, I was looking at the, at the numbers, is it, is it moving it from contingent budget to these other items? Is that really what's going on?
So in the last meeting, we set the, um, baseline budget to two-hundred and, I don't have the number in front of me, two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, um, so that today is Supervisor District, um, for, for Kavanaugh's, uh, district, that is the baseline. Um, my understanding is he requested, uh, to increase his budget to three-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars, which would require a vote of the board.
And so it requires a, a supermajority, and that requires Mr. Kavanaugh to weigh in, and we can't get him here. Are you there, Mr. Kavanaugh, Supervisor Kavanaugh? If he's, if he's not there, it doesn't do any good to vote on it, because we, we, we need a...
Do we continue it?
Supermajority.
Want to continue this one as well to August third?
Okay.
Of course, we want to hear what the requests are to, to go over, right?
Right, they're, did you not get, okay, all right, so let's, I guess we just, do we need a motion to continue, or just continue?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, I need a motion then, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to continue item number sixteen to the August third, two-thousand-and-twenty-two, um, meeting. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion, the action is postponed to August third, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you.
Thank you. And moving along, item fourteen, uh, public hearing and discussion on resolution number two-zero-two, wait, we just did this, what the heck? Isn't this what we just did?
No, this is, this is our tax rate. This is, this is the county.
Item number seventeen.
You know what, oh, you know, because I have, I have the page twice, and I'm sorry, it was, somebody handed me a copy. There we go, that makes more sense. Item seventeen, sorry about that, I'm getting dingy here, it's been too long. Public hearing and discussion approval, uh, disapproval on, in accordance with ARS forty-two dash one-seven-one zero-four and ARS, uh, four-two dash one-seven-one zero-seven, truth and taxation hearing of resolution number zero-seven-zero-six-two-two dash zero-one dash PCB for the adoption of the Penalt County fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Ms. Woods.
Afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. Angie Woods, Director of Office of Finance and Budget. Um, before you, today, we have an item for adoption of our fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Um, at the end of the presentation, I will open it, uh, back to you for, uh, truth and taxation hearing, much like the other ones we did this morning, um, in regards to the flood control district and the library district. Um, I do have a short presentation, not a lot of, um, additional information at this point in time, you've seen a lot of this in, uh, the last few months, so a little bit of repetitive, but, uh, I thought it would be good for our public that may not have seen these slides. So the budget schedules that are attached to the item, um, total budget for those is just over one billion, one billion seventeen million fifty-five thousand two-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars, um, and has not, uh, this particular pie has not changed from the tentative budget, so, uh, you know, general fund, um, budget is forty-seven percent, special revenue fund forty-one percent, and, um, you can see the other percentages there. Total revenues have not changed from the tentative budget either. We have done some reallocations for, um, things that have changed in between times. Um, I, I did send a email to the board outlining some of the major changes that had occurred, um, and if you have any questions on those, I'd be happy to speak to any of those, those items as well. So, no, really no changes in the pieces of the pie on the revenue side, um, or the expenditure side, the, um, you know, relatively safe, same as where we were at just a couple of weeks ago. Typically, every year, we, we add in some information in regards to facilities, projects, transportation projects, flood control projects. Um, this slide here highlights some of the major facility projects that are included in this year's budget, um, you know, continuation of the building of our medical examiner's office, our public defender's office, um, and then you can see on the slide here, we have several other, uh, projects throughout the county, um, you know, whether it's a maintenance project or a, uh, you know, recreation or, you know, uh, some sort of upgrade to one of our facilities, uh, that's what is going on and has been included in, in the, in the budget for our facilities here. Any questions on facility projects?
Does the mosquito lab put a lot of mosquitoes in it? Do we employ a lot of mosquitoes at the lab?
So our, our public health district, uh, they currently have a mosquito lab that operates out of, um, a location on Central Avenue, uh, the plan is to move it over to the, um, Jason Lopez, uh, circle where the public health building is, so. So they, technically, I don't know exactly what they do, but I believe there's, um, you know, scientific methodology behind what they're, uh, performing there in their lab.
That was a great explanation.
I, I believe they're, they're, uh, testing for Zika and, uh, other mosquito-borne illnesses.
All right.
Transportation project, and, you know, the, this is just a few of the major projects that are included in the budget for transportation, um, continuation of, uh, build grant improvements, State Route twenty-four, Central Arizona Parkway, Meridian Road, Treacle Road, Thornton. In addition to that, um, these transportation projects, our public works department also has money funded in their budget for pavement preservation, um, you know, palliative desk control type projects, those types of things, but we really just wanted to give you the, those high-level projects at this point in time. And our flood control district also has, um, you know, there's a, quite a variety of projects here, um, flood control-wise, they're using those dollars associated to, uh, the secondary levy for those projects. I can read through those if you'd like, but, uh, very long list of projects, like, some of which may or may not have been, um, pulled forward from previous years. Um, and, and our airport, I know that our airport has, I believe, these two projects that are on here, or, or things that are on the slide here, they are continuation of improvements that are being made at the airport that started this year, and are, are gonna continue into the future there, you know, um, just started that, and it, um, ongoing maintenance, ongoing improvement. Our general fund revenue budget, again, this, this pie chart has not changed, um, not expecting any kind of, uh, increase in revenues at this point in time between the tentative budget and the final budget. Our distribution of our general fund, um, however, may have changed slightly, but the percentages didn't change at all. Um, which leads to, uh, our overall budget of one billion seventeen million fifty-five thousand two-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars. And again, adoption of our tax levy and rates will be no later than August fifteenth, so we're in the process of collecting, um, those jurisdictional, um, rates and levies, and we'll again hold a, a vote at that point in time. And then lastly, here is our truth and taxation notice, um, and I didn't state this earlier, but, um, when we, the, there is a requirement of the county to publish these notices in the, the newspaper, we publish them online, um, we have our communications and marketing team sends out a press release, all of that is done by statute, so, um, there is communication out to our constituents, um, if made note that we may want to increase that communication in future years. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Questions or comments?
Or comments, it'll be fine.
Pretty much in the same boat as this morning, uh, of course, we all know we need the budget, we need all this stuff, just not really, uh, happy with the way the assessors' taxes are automatic increases. A lot of folks don't understand that we can't communicate with ourselves up here, we're only allowed to talk to one other supervisor. This morning, I spoke with Supervisor Miller, and he feels the same way, it's, and he's actually had more experience with that than I, uh, and we, we spoke about how your vehicles depreciate, your homes actually depreciate, too. I mean, you get cracks in it, and it ages, yet it just automatically goes up, it never flatlines, and I'm not, not happy with that. We have, we have good growth, we should be able to, to, uh, proceed without having to have these increases, so it just leaves a bad, uh, bad taste in my mouth. to proceed without having to have these increases, so it just leaves a bad, bad taste in my mouth.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lou.
Would you mind indulging for a little while? I know it's getting close to lunch, I got some low blood sugar going on, and, but unfortunately, Mr. Todd is, probably didn't, wasn't able to stay with this the whole time, but I think it would help, because this board, you know, some of the members are fairly new, and we've been at this for a long time, and I think it's important both for the organization and the employees, and for the people like Mr. Todd, and, and it sounds like a lady in the audience who may gesture that direction, to understand where we're coming from, and where we've been, and what we're doing, to put this in context, if, if that's okay with you, it might, might take a little bit. I'm shooting at the hip, I'm trying to make some connections, because Angie will put these in certain presentations, and this is usually the kind of discussion that we have in a strategic planning session, but it's pertinent and relevant to the time and to the moment. And Mr. Miller has made these comments in the past, that we have philosophical conversations that we enjoy, and he's been here, you know, this whole time before he sat in office, he saw where we're at when I stepped in in 2009, end of 2009, 2010. So, I, I hope this is helpful, not only for the public, but for staff and for all of us as we go forward. And, one of the things that I know that I've tried to articulate to the staff, even when we did our culture development, some, and, and for the why for all of us, you know, what meaning and purpose do we get out of this job, it has always been that we're, you know, the hands and the feet of this democracy that we live. And, in, in this system of representative democracy that we're functioning in, and the parts that we play, you know, from an economic standpoint, we're in capitalism, which is private ownership over state ownership. And to, to the point of some of the comments that were made, we, we care about this, not only because people do have a hard time paying their bills, they aren't fixed income, but because in the system that we live in, people need the capital to own, and they need the capital to invest, to do R and D, to innovate, to execute that plan, to make a profit, to live that business cycle, and then to take that wealth and come back and do it again, and do it again. So, it's essential for the way that we live, for all of us, to be as efficient and effective with the money, and I, I don't mean in a cliche, but to be responsible with the funds in such a way that that capital exists for that to continue to happen. So, and to the point that another supervisor made, you can put it in terms of freedom, but the, if, if we don't do that, and if we're wasteful, and if we're taxing too much, then that's going to take away the ability of our way of life and our society and our form of government. So, I, I just want everybody to understand, not only because that helps to give meaning and purpose to us as employees, as we're executing our jobs and doing the best we can, but for the public to understand that that's the why, and, and that we do care, and that's why we care. As a part of that, when we stepped into that, we were, we were one of the highest taxing counties from a rate perspective, from a levy perspective, from a levy per capita perspective. And, and so, when we came into this, we did benchmarks, and we said, hey, not only is all that happening, but how much money does our community have to fund the government relatively? So, when Angie saw these statistics, for example, when we started back in 2010, it was 1.16% was the primary property tax levy of the income of the county, aggregate income of the county. So, we set out to say that's, you know, that was the second highest, we're 15 counties in the state, that's the second highest. I don't know who was above, it's probably Pima County. So, we said, this has got to change, so now we're at 0.71%. So, from 1.16% of aggregate income to 0.71%, significant difference, right? Almost cutting this thing in half. One of the things that we talk about a lot is this max levy. And when we walked into this, we were taxing the max levy, we say 100% of the max levy. I don't think everybody, this is very technical, so I don't think people always understa, the way the law reads is that you can tax, the max levy is calculated by you could tax 2% more on the existing properties, and then plus new construction. And then, that occurs every year. So, what that formula is really trying to do is say, on the existing, you're just keeping up with inflation, if that, right, 2% growth on existing, plus the new construction, because you have new, you have new residents, new businesses you're serving. So, that law is just kind of keeping you, so to speak, on track. And so, but we were taxing 100% of that, and now we're taxing 68% of that. So, what that means is over these 10 years, okay, we, we started out, we're taxing 102, almost 103 million back in 2010, we're taxing 111 now. The max rate's 178 million. So, if we were to have just caught up over these 10 years, kept up with inflation, plus the new construction, we'd be taxing 178. If we were to just keep up with inflation, was actually over 2%, which we made a point in this last presentation, we'd be taxing 132 million, we're taxing 111. And so, let's say there's about 40 million of new construction in that, since over 10 years. You know, they're probably, it's about 40, probably rounded, and we can get that number exactly. Then, on the existing, we're taxing 71 million now. In 2010, we were taxing 110 million on those same existing properties. So, and, and we've had these discussions with the board and work sessions as far as, what we call it flat levy, which means the TNT rate, or do we want to go flat rate, or some kind of hybrid of this? And we've had, and we'll have those conversations again, and when we do the strategic planning update, we'll talk about this a little bit more in depth. But, the point I'm trying to make is, with some of these TNT hearings that we've done, and some of these, what I would call relatively smaller increases, even over these past 10 years, even with those, the net-net of your TNT would have been a decrease from 102 million to 71 million, because that's how much we have held the line and reduced. For example, when the valuations crashed and went down, there were years we didn't change the tax rate. We on purpose and nowhere, we increased this thing, we'll take the hit. Our, our levy maybe was 11 million less.
Can I, can I interrupt your train of thought? Because my blood sugar's crashing too.
Yeah.
For instance, we just approved the Amarillo area out there, Apache Junction's doing the DR Horton, and all of that new growth, they have got CFDs, and there will be new CFDs every time there's an addition. What that means is, when you're starting to complete a new area with these new homes, they're taxed at a higher rate, because you've got to build the roads from scratch. The areas that are already established, that have already been there, they've already got the roads, they bought in where their taxes were, so anybody buying into these new areas realize, I'm going to get a brand-new house, yes, I'm paying a little higher taxes than the rest of the, of the area, but that may be one solution to make this a little more palatable.
Right, for those district amenities.
Yeah, and that way, the older neighborhoods actually go down and don't pay for the new neighborhoods.
Right, right, so the new ones are paying for them, and to, to your point on that growth, you know, theoretically, we should be then gaining efficiencies and economies of scales with these growths, which is really truly what's happened. And not only that, we're converting so that we're trying to grow that industrial base more, which will shift that property tax burden more to those businesses and less to the residents. And, and that's occurring as well.
Which is, I always use the example of Intel and Chandler, it's so easy to run the government in Chandler, because they got Intel paying for everything, and we don't have that yet. We're on our way there, but-
Right, yeah, and so, two other, just, the, the benchmarks that we mentioned, though, we, we used to be at the, the upper level in levy per capita, and now we're near the middle, which was a great accomplishment over those times, and, like I said, we, we, like we always show, we used to be 31% of the tax bill, and now we're 24. So, we do care about this a lot, and, and all of those things that we've did with renegotiating contracts, getting rid of contracts, you know, changing up departments, and changing up structures, and the way we do services, was all aimed as a part of that. So, I just would want Mr. Todd and any other public to know, and you all to know, how much we do focus and care about that, and from a tax rate perspective, we can get into more detail at the strategic planning session, but I do want you to know the history, maybe this single year, it's maybe two, two cents over the TNT, which is a certain percentage, but over the decade, we have lowered this thing significantly, we've probably lowered the, on the existing, 30%. Thank you.
All right. Any other, another question from the board, Supervisor Miller, comment?
Comment.
Comment.
Comment, because I appreciate Mr. Lou kind of giving some, some background on all of that. It was, it was shocking when I first took office here nine years ago, 10 years ago, of the, the rate, and the levies, and the whole thing, I mean, it was just mind-boggling. And, it was, it's hard to turn this battleship around, I mean, you just can't do it overnight. And, it, it took some sacrifice on some departments, I mean, we, we saw a big decrease in employees. We, we did a lot of things to, to really try to stabilize this thing, and then the focus became, drive the rate down, drive the rate down. And, so, and we've done a pretty good job of that, and, and as he pointed out, we could be taxing a lot more than we are, and I know that that's maybe not as comforting as, as some people would like to see it, but it's, you know, we still have to provide a lot of services. I think we've really maintained a level of service for the citizens of this county, and we've done it in decreasing the levy to each individual. So, it's tricky, it's difficult, it's not something you can do overnight, and I'm still committed to try and get, get it even lower and make it more palatable in the future, so, I just, I want to share that, and thank Mr. Lou for giving some of that background. I don't know how many hours we spent debating it and discussing it in, over the years. I take it very personal, and, and, and with Angie too, I've had a lot of debates with her, about how do we get where we want to be with this, this organization? So, thank both of you for your hard work and your indulging of me.
I think we all have those conversations.
Mr. Chairman, if you wouldn't mind me, just one more comment. And, before you, is, is, I went back to the general fund revenue budget. So, I started in, in the budget officer in 2013, and until recently, we, we haven't seen a lot of change in this particular pie chart. The primary property tax portion of this pie chart used to be 50%. As, as we've lowered the rate, we've begun to diversify our revenue streams. And so, it's just kind of a, a good picture on how the strategic plan of reducing the rate over a period of time actually plays out, and, and I can also share a previous slide with you, so you can truly see that change. It's pretty significant, so, that's all I just wanted to add.
Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing, at this time, are there any other questions from the board? Hearing, hearing none, then I'll open the public hearing, somewhere, there it is. Any members of the public wish to speak, please come forward.
Thank you, my name's Kathy Reed, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Lou. You gave a very good explanation of that. I'm a developer industrial property from several different states, I am looking and have been looking in Arizona. Question that I have, not only to you, but also to the committee here, the supervisors is, in different areas that I come from, the supervisors and or county commissioners, they give tax breaks to businesses coming into the area for certain periods of time. I do not know if that is something that the Pinellas County supervisors do. Also, the, you mentioned something about increasing the percentage of industrial properties to offset the county taxes for homeowners. How, is there a percentage that the supervisors' board and the county manager looks at per land? Also, and I'm probably talking a little Greek here, because everything's different in Arizona, from the different states, Kansas, Oregon, Texas, that I've been built, have, have built in, they actually have different areas, and there's city limits, and then there's county growth areas. So, there's urban growth areas outside of those, within the three to 10, you know, five, 10-year period. Does Pinellas County also do that, is that just a normal thing for, for Arizona here too? So, how far out does your urban growth go? Because that's usually where your industrial and your, your commercial winds up.
Yeah, thank you. We, we have in our comprehensive plan that identifies what the land uses are, we do have zoning. A lot of the land that we have in, in Pinellas County available for development is owned by the state land trust.
I understand that.
Yeah, so we do work closely with them on that, to that point, some of it's residential, some of, some of it's just generally zoned, and so would need to be zoned in the future. To your question on the property taxes, and the county and state law doesn't have the ability to just exempt or forego on industrial or any other project, property taxes. But if you do qualify for federal designations like foreign trade zones, or your opportunity zone, then you can take advantage of those.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Are there, are there any other members of the public care to speak to the board? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing, and I would ask for a motion unless the board has any other questions, or comments. Try to ask for a motion on 17, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number 17 as presented today.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, those in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Okay. Kaiser. Okay.
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Supervisor Miller?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Sertie?
Nay.
And Chairman McClure?
Aye.
That motion passes, three to one.
All right, and item 18, thank you Ms. Woods. Item 18, are there any items that the, are there any agenda items that any of the board would care to have on a future agenda? Hearing none, we'll just move right on.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, is Supervisor Kavanaugh still there?
Yes.
Okay. I, I, the only reason I wanted to ask if he was still there, because we did have item number 16 regarding his district that was, that was continued, and you would have the ability now, if he stays on, to reconsider that item if you should so choose, but you have scheduled it right now to be reheard on the 3rd of August. So, I just wanted to give you that opportunity, if in fact you wanted to try to clean up that item at this point, or continue on.
Supervisor Kavanaugh?
In the interest of, in the interest of time, if that's what the chairman would recommend, postpone it till August.
You're, you're good to postpone it to August?
Okay.
Okay, well then, we'll stay the course. All right then, in this case, item 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, executive session, so I would ask for a motion to convene into executive session for 19 through 23?
移到
Second.
I have a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, we're in executive session. Thank you.